Start by talking a little bit about meeting logistics. Anyone joining remotely, we would ask you to change your your display on your computer screen to your first and last name. Anyone who speaks to the council, we'd ask you to start by stating your name and where you live. We ask you to keep all your comments or questions to under three minutes. If you're speaking about a specific agenda item, please keep your comments germane to the topic at hand. Anyone who wishes to speak must be called upon by the mayor. And again, you may make a statement or ask questions, but in any case, limited to three minutes. And if you go over time, discuss non-german comments, go on too long, etc. You may be interrupted and asked to bring your to adjust your comments or behavior. And and this is really an important point because last time we did have someone who who just refused to stop speaking when their time expired. And you know, it's important for us all to be here to do the business of the city, and it's important for for us to be able to hear from from members of the public. But we can only do that realistically if if we could have an ordered discussion, including an orderly conduct of our meetings. And so I ask everyone to respect our rules of procedure as we go forward. First item up is to approve the agenda. Is there any requested changes to the agenda? And we can then move to general business and appear.
To move to pull an item off the consent agenda?
Sure.
Hold on, let me just take care to see what my Glock is. It's the Community Resilience and Mitigation Fund Elevation Project Contracts.
Okay, sounds good. We'll do that. We get to that. General business and appearances. It's an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. And as with the other portions of the meeting, comments are limited to two minutes. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Tara Byrne.
Would you step up to the table? Yeah, sit there and then and that way you can be picked up by the microphone.
This is my first time at a city council meeting. Thank you. My name is Tara Byrne. I'm a Montpelier resident and a mom of a three and a five-year-old. And I reached out to a couple of you council members and you as well, Mayor McCullough, about an urgent issue happening in our city. I received an email from my kiddos childcare program last week. They're called Turtle Island Children's Center. Now, for unfortunate reasons, they need to move out of their lovely home and find somewhere new. But for reasons I can't understand, they have to leave Montpelier. So as a Montpelier resident, I'm asking myself, what does that mean for the future of my family's welfare and our childcare needs? And I did some research, and I think you'll be shocked to hear this. If Turtle Island leave, there won't be any childcare program in the city, and I'm talking all-inclusive, that accepts infants all the way through preschool kiddos ready for kindergarten. So I think that doesn't look good for the city and for Vermonters in terms of our priorities and where they stand with working families and early childhood education. I think the city needs safe spaces where little kids are welcome. And commuting out of town to find childcare reduces my ability to do my job and make money for my family and pay my taxes. So if I have to shorten my workday, I'm going to have less income. And if I have to extend my commute, I can't do things I love to do, like be a poll worker volunteering with John every time there's an election. So I want to be an active community member, and I can't do all these things if I can't even get childcare for my kids. So I'm calling on city council to take responsibility and find a way to save childcare in our city. I think the people at Turtle Island Children's Center are wonderful, but I don't think it's their job to save childcare as a system in a capital city. It's their job to nurture my kiddos and run a brilliant program and hopefully expand it. But it's not their job to counsel distressed parents, counsel distressed teachers who may be worried about the future of their job and become real estate pros finding new locations. It's too many jobs for them to take on. So I'm urging the council to start some sort of a task force. Maybe it's about early childhood education and help Turtle Island save the school, expand the program, and help open more childcare programs. If we call ourselves the state capital, we have to have the systems that every city needs to function and support its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Yes. Either one of you, you fight it out. Sure, why don't you come on up? Come on up, Mark.
Thank you for your time. And I'm also a Montpelier resident. My name is Mark LaRosa. I am a parent of a child at Turtle Island, and I'm also the president of the Board of Directors of Turtle Island. So I just wanted to share quickly the little bit of the experience of being a parent and being a parent volunteer. I took on the role of being on the board and then the board president to offer help, to be supportive. And within the seven months that I've been on the board, we entered a crisis situation where we had to find a new property to move, we would have to move out of the property we have been for 30 years, 30, 30-plus years. What I have seen in this is not just the need for daycare. We already know about that. My son was on the waiting list for a year and a half. We were very happy when he got in. We're very happy that he has been there at this wonderful school for so many years. But in addition, just as the need for daycare, it's the difficulty of running the business, of how difficult the business is. We have heard the reasons. High tuition for parents, low pay for teachers, and there's just no way to bring extra resources in. We are a private business that provides a public service. We have budgets that don't align necessarily with commercial rent. And we're now trying to find a property in a commercial rent atmosphere. And this left us not exactly struggling. We think we have a plan, but it has been a very difficult road for the last three months. Montpelier doesn't need one Turtle Island. Montpelier needs two Turtle Islands or three Turtle Islands. We have the capacity. So what we should be here talking about is how not how Turtle Island is hoping to stay in the city, how we should be in the city and another place should be opening. We have worked so hard, quadruple overtime to find a new property. And it is pretty clear that we will probably have to move part, if not most of our program, out of town in order to keep it operational. That means for our current students and our current families and anybody who wants to join the program in the upcoming years. We think that we have a plan. We have a proposal we were going to present, and you'll see that in a few weeks, I guess, that could allow us to keep part of our program in the city. We will have to split our program to keep it operational at its current level. We hope that by doing that, we can maintain our program and give ourselves space to plan a true development and a true expansion sometime sometime down the road in the next few years. But this is what it has taken to keep this place afloat. And we are a well-run. We have well-financed for an early child education center. We have a group of teachers who would be the envy of any any school anywhere, let alone a children's center. Was that my three minutes? Okay, so if we are struggling, that tells me how hard would it be to open a new business? So I want everyone to know just, I'll leave now, but I, um, just so you know.
Is there anyone else here who's here to talk about Turtle Island right now? Because we might as well get you all together. Okay.
So I'm, my name is Phoebe Stone. I'm actually an Isma Player resident, but I work at Turtle Island. And, you know, following Tara and Mark, Mark mentioned that we have an idea for how we could stay in Montpelier, and that involves the country club roadside. In the immediate future, in the short term, we have been starting to reach out about using the existing childcare space there that used to be Sweet Clover Nursery to house a portion of our of our current, you know, enrolled students. Probably around 20 to 30 kids. We currently have 70 children enrolled in our school, and we employ almost 30 people. So as everyone has said, like moving that out of Montpelier would be a huge loss. And so in the short term, we'd like to work with the city to move in there into the that existing space. And then in the long term, we've been speaking with the hub and with Arnie from the rec department about how we could collaborate to really have a thriving, build the thriving community as the city hopes to do in the future. That's pretty much.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Jocelyn York. I'm the executive director at Turtle Island. Phoebe's the associate director. She didn't, that she works there, but that is not remotely true. She keeps this completely afloat. But I am also a parent of a three, five, and seven-year-old, and I'm a Montpelier resident in District Two. And I bought a house well before I moved here. It took me two years to find a childcare spots for my kids, so we had to short-term rental a house in the hopes that at some point we could, you know, jump and stop having rentals and move up. And we thought it was going to be just a quick stopgap, and it was two years of running remotely, trying to run an Airbnb while trying to get childcare. The only reason I have it is because I run the school. I wouldn't have gotten a spot otherwise. I jumped the waitlist because I had the habit to be able to do the job that I was being hired for. And this is not a strange situation for a family in Montpelier. There's over 1,000 spots needed just in this region. And I had come from the Battleboro Airbnb before, and I thought that it was impacted there, but it's probably paradise compared to here as far as how many spots are needed. And that was really surprising to me. And so I, it is really, really heartbreaking and really stressful to think about the fact that we might have to take those spots out of this town in the city. There are so many people who rely on the amazing, unique bus system that we have in this city that make it possible for people to get to work and get their children to school. We have teachers who rely on it. Many families rely on it. They will not, some people bike, they will not be able to get their kids to school if we leave the city. And as Tara said, many people, their communities will become impossible. So I do hope that the city can take whatever way they can to focus, really focus and create a way to do something for this, for not just Turtle Island, but for the city in general, to come up with some sort of a plan to to lift up early childhood programming and help people get more going so that we don't have this crisis and our workforce is more robust and there's just less stress in general here. So, thank you.
Thanks. Before you step down, there may be other people. I'm not sure, but I completely agree with you on the importance. My granddaughter, one of my granddaughters goes there, and the other granddaughter used to go there. It was very hard to get in. I'm curious, a number of the communications we received said that Turtle Island is the only childcare center in the city. And I was thinking, well, wait a minute, is there child's children's home and isn't and and a family center and there may be a home-based programs too. I don't know, but.
I haven't heard, I've never personally.
You're the person.
There's no other programs that are all inclusive from an infant all the way through to the oldest preschoolers. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So a teacher in the Montpelier High is a three-week-old, and she's like, where do I send my kids then? So I think Turtle Island is doing one that actually takes on, okay, program taking on older kiddos.
Because one of them starts at six months or something. Okay, okay, thanks.
Oh, yeah, family center might, but yeah, we're also the largest. So that that might be more. People are saying there's nothing the same size.
It's a lot of spaces.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who here to talk about childcare? Sir, are you here to talk about childcare?
Yes.
Good, because I'm trying to cluster all those comments together.
This, my name is John Ray Hill, and I spoke to you last meeting. And we have been encouraged to talk to Turtle Island, which we have done, talked to Mark and Phoebe twice, and it's been very productive to learn that they don't need the whole building, which is what we understood they did, which is a huge relief. So we had a chance to explain what the hub was thinking about and what, and it sounds like our needs are very compatible. And it's been wonderful to have a chance to talk face-to-face and work out our needs. We may well produce a joint proposal if we have to go through the RFP process, which I'm not speaking out of paranoia. So we're, we think it's been very productive to talk to Turtle Island. And unfortunately, because the part, maybe because the RFP has come out, we haven't been able to continue talking to the city administration and Josh and Arnie, who we've had three meetings canceled. So it feels a little weird to have the city talking to Turtle Island. We're talking to Turtle Island, but we can't talk to the city until the RFP is done. And we're just wondering if there's a way we could make the same kind of progress that we started making with the administration rather than kick it down the road a while. And you have to realize that we, I just got back from the cost estimator, and our $3 million project is now over $6 million, closer to seven or eight. So time really does matter here. And now we have to raise more than twice as much money as we do to to build our building. So a month here, a month there really does make a difference. And we're hoping that we can say Turtle Island and the hub are in accord. We think there's room for the city needs in the building and ask this to you to consider if there's a way to keep communication open. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that if I could. I think John is being accurate in what he says, but I want to be clear. The council had directed us in February to work with the hub to develop a joint plan with the city. Well, had he indicated that's what you wanted us to do?
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that is not what we voted for. It was not my intention. So I don't want you to characterize it as we told you to work with the hub and work something out.
We believed our direction was. If we got that wrong, then that's fine. I'm not actually saying it was a fault. I'm saying that we were sitting down with them, starting to work with them on a joint plan. So this wasn't a blame thing at all. It was just, that's what we were doing. And then when we clarified at the last meeting that we were going to put out to RFP, we didn't feel as appropriate for us to be working closely with one potential bidder. And so we have not really been working closely with Turtle Island either. I think some of the council members have, but the staff has been simply urging them to work with the hub, and we think that's been happening. And we've been saying, encouraging them to submit a proposal. So I think, I want to be clear, we're happy to talk to people. For us to be sitting down, talking to one potential participant about here's how the city and your program are going to put together a joint proposal and not with the other, I think doesn't make a lot of sense. And, you know, we've opened it up to the public, so there could potentially, I don't know of any other people that are interested, but there could be. And so we we've just got to step back until the proposals are due. But we're happy to talk with anybody about the things. And yes, there have been some meetings canceled. Isn't entirely due to all the protocol. We are in a major transition right now. We are short a lot of staff. And we're prioritizing between a lot of things that we have going on and and working on a specific proposal with a vendor hasn't been as high a proposal as some of the other needs we have, frankly. And so, you know, we're sorry about that, but that's just, we are in triage mode. And so that's it. So we're not turning our back on the hub. We're not favoring them. We're not favoring Turtle Island. We're not refusing to meet with anybody. We are allowing a process to play out as it ought to, and the bids are due a month from now, April 20th. So our two meetings from now. And then the council will see what came in and how they want to do.
Thanks, Bill.
So would it be helpful to the staff if we attend the meetings when you cannot attend because of the other things? Is there any rule or legal restrictions just to keep things moving, not only for this specific example for other things?
The meetings we were having were very specific about coming up with a plan for city rec facilities and the hub rec facilities to co, you know, developing a plan. This is when we thought Turtle Island didn't need the site. Which, and then we learned they did, and we brought it to the council's attention. So to continue to have planning meetings, whether it's anybody along those lines, is counterproductive to an RFP process. I think it's really healthy and fabulous that the hub and Turtle Island are talking and probably putting a joint proposal. We can help them on process and give them information and let them know those kinds of things. I just don't think it's appropriate for us to be telling people how to put their proposal together when we're the ones that are asking. So I think, you know, any, so I, there's nothing illegal about it. It's just, I think, we've got a month, and we'll see what we get, and we'll make a decision. Hopefully, it's a great one.
Thanks, Bill.
If I could, I know we usually don't do this, but but we started it.
Yeah.
Thank you. My understanding was that Jim made a motion that led to meetings between the hub and the city. No, no RFP, no talk of an RFP. Then either Carrie or Lauren made a motion last meeting, I think, to produce an RFP, mainly, I think, because of Turtle Island. And now Turtle Island tells us that there's no conflict. They don't need the whole building. They're working with the hub. I don't see why we, I mean, send out an RFP by all means, but why not resume the conversations? Because the hub is working with a third party that Turtle Island is not. So why hold, why hold up those discussions for a month? When you started them without an RFP to begin with?
No, whatever you guys want. Because we, we directed the city to an RFP. Right, we are, we are the people that are asking for proposals. We own the property. So we're in a weird situation here. We've said, we want people to tell us how they should best use the property. But if you all want us to work with them to help the proposal and you know, if if nobody else shows up, that's probably great. If somebody else does, then we've intervened in the process. But it's really, it's your call. So Carrie and then Ben.
Yes. So in my thinking, the whole idea of the RFP process was that it would be public, that it would be open to anybody, that it would be accessible, that it would be equitable. So it's really inequitable for conversations to happen because you know somebody who has a friend who told somebody something. So I, I'm glad that you stopped those conversations. I don't want those same kind of same kind of conversations to happen with Turtle Island. I think it's great that the hub and Turtle Island are talking to each other. Staff is available to answer any questions, provide information that they might need to come up with a proposal. But it's really, really crucial that we have an equitable process that is not just available for people who are in the know. So that's my big thinking about this, and I appreciate the way you're going about it. And then I just have to say one thing. I'm a huge Turtle Island fan. Both my kids went there. I used to work there. My son used to work there. Big fan of Turtle Island, would love to see it stay. We do also have the family center and at least one home provider who provide infant care. So I just want to get, I don't want the family center to be slated there or any of our home providers. It's clearly not enough.
Ben.
I just got to say, I just really agree with Carrie in terms of the RFP process being open and equitable and transparent and but I'm just on a personal level, I would just say, I think it's really a wonderful outcome that the hub and Turtle Island are talking and be really wonderful to see a collaborative proposal put together.
Okay, thanks, folks. Mark, I'm just gonna I think I'm gonna move to whoever the next person is seeking to be heard. Is there anyone else on the topic of childcare? So why don't you step up now?
Thanks. I appreciate this sort of disability accommodation. I wanted to start, my name is Tori Rodine. I'm, I live in Montpelier in District Two. I'm a retired social worker. I serve in the Montpelier Homelessness Task Force and also on the Affordable Housing and Homelessness Local Organization Committee for Vermont Interfaith Action. And I'm here this evening because last week at the, this is not officially on behalf of the homelessness task force because we don't have a way to make decisions about this kind of thing between meetings. But at our last meeting, it occurred to everyone that the governor had It occurred to everyone that the governor had vetoed the budget um, adjustment act. Um, he was explicit that he was vetoing it because it included a three-month extension of the um. General assistance emergency housing um. Program, the, and um, our concern is that, um, the, what, what's happened in the meantime is that both, both houses of the legislature have approved a revision to the plan. Um, I'm not clear if it's on the, on the governor's desk yet, but it wasn't, I think, as of earlier today. Um, there's a good likelihood he'll veto it again. The outcome of that is that somewhere between six and twelve hundred people. Um, including at least a hundred and sixty children will be put on the street on the first of April, which is, I think, less than a week from today. It occurred to me at our last um, task force meeting that the governor already knows that um. All of us who are out there in a kind of bleeding heart way, um, being advocates for various causes, um, are going to object to the veto. But that what he really needs to hear, since his only alternative plan is to give money to. The cities and towns and have the cities and towns take over the response, the life and death responsibility. For our unhoused neighbor, neighbors, um, that he needs to hear from the cities and towns because um. You're representing um, a very wide range of concerns and interests and very, very weighty responsibilities that a lot of the rest of us don't have to carry day to day. And you can tell him very clearly, this is not something the city can take on. The city of Montpelier cannot take on the life and death responsibility for every unhoused person here, um. Can't feed them, can't provide them with safe housing, um. In the case of this winter in Montpelier, can't keep them alive. And um, that's not a fair thing to ask a city or a town to do. And if Montpelier, which is really well resourced and really well organized and has a far better infrastructure. Than most of the cities in the state, can't do it, then certainly um. A town of fourteen hundred people or eight hundred people probably can't do it either. So what we were thinking at our last meeting is that would be great for the city council and um. The city manager and the city administration to agree to write a letter to the governor saying, we can't do this thing. Um, and we're not going to do this thing, um, and it has to be a state responsibility. In the meantime, the city of Burlington.
I, I can tell you, our lobbyist has been bringing that message to them.
Great.
And, and uh, we, I just received a letter yesterday. On, on what the impact will be if this happens and for the Barry district office of uh. What used to be called the DSW uh, would uh. This would apply to fifty-six households, including eighty adults and fourteen children. And it's just. Unacceptable.
Yeah.
So, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And. And it's still light out.
It is, thank you very much, and I hope that you'll write a letter. Burlington um, has already done that, if you need a copy of it and you don't have one, I can send it to you to use for a model.
Yeah, if you, if you could email it to me and.
Happily, and, and, and Barry, I know was meeting this afternoon to talk about doing something similar. Thank you so much, and thanks for all the work that all of you do on this issue because I really am, every day I'm impressed by. How committed people on this council are to.
Thanks, Tori.
The safety of our neighbors.
Steve.
Can I follow up?
Um. If you have ten seconds, really, we're trying to. Got it.
I don't know what your process is, I respect it, I respect equity, but there's a resource. And we're gonna lose time to talk about childcare.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark. Steve.
Um, I will overlap a little bit onto that topic, uh. I do consider this an emergency, I like the recommendation that the count.
Name please.
Steve Whitaker, Montpelier.
All of us up here know who you are, some people may not.
That's fine, um. Council should form a task force and create an emergency plan to avoid displacement of Turtle Island out of the city. On the other hand, I question, seriously question the appropriateness of Country Club Road. Being that it involves just placing uh. Shell, a shelter that's already there, that's under compet, that is uh. Insufficient capacity for the amount of unhoused people. Uh, it doesn't account for the traffic and congestion uh, of the intersection, the, the lack of safety of the intersection with Route Two. Nor that is, does it. Uh, anticipate coexistence with a bunch of construction traffic going up there to start building anything. So it, it might not be the best place for Turtle Island to relocate to. I do want to find a place for Turtle Island to flourish and expand, but I don't think Country Club Road is it right now. I just, it raises all kinds of red flags, um. The. Lack of a traffic capacity analysis and, and kind of work backwards to what that intersection. And what kind of traffic trip generation that parcel could accommodate. Would help in the design process, but I thought you were going to have something on the agenda for tonight's meeting of how are we going to get to the phase two done? Uh, you won't get it done in six weeks, especially if you haven't started it at tonight's meeting. That's the action that came out of last meeting was to evolve the Country Club Road design into a master plan in six weeks. I think that's unrealistic, but. I don't think White and Burke is the only, you know, master planner for what we're looking to be. And I feel like this is a self-created problem with our own screwed up planning process in Montpelier. And now we've got a new reactive emergency to not lose critical childcare seats. So, but that should move to the front of the line. Parallel, we should be getting a master plan design firm underway. With community engagement as laid out in the White and Burke plan, what we spent a lot of money on, and it recommended phase two design with a lot of public participation. So that went off the rails and the attempts to cut corners and the. The number of false statements on our website that say that the, the plan was adopted and this is what we're moving forward and. And the draft city plan that says the planning phase is over, this, that's just really unconscionable and reckless. Uh, secondly, our. Oh, I want to protest your three minutes because you've got important stuff to hear tonight and you've had people run over. And I think you need to revisit that, it was created after the two-minute arrest. Um, but secondly, our construction. Ripped open thirty feet of utility vault, concrete utility vault, punctured the four hundred pair copper. You know, there's fiber in there, just the, the recklessness of not knowing where our utilities are. I don't even recall DigSafe marking concrete, I may have missed it, but it violated DigSafe. Uh, cut, when we did the chargers out on behind uh, those level three chargers.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Anybody else in the room who's uh, looking to be recognized tonight?
I'm, I'm here representing Resurrection Methodist Church, so I'm not sure.
Okay, you're on the agenda.
Yes, I'm on it.
So, right. Uh, Zach.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and um, good evening, everybody. I'm Zach Hughes, uh, District uh, Three, Montpelier. And I'm encouraged uh, with this uh, collaboration with Turtle Island and the hub. This is incredible stuff, I like it, I want to see more of this type of thing in the city. Uh, but that's not why I'm here speaking about it. I always thought Turtle Island was an actual island, but anyway, um, let's uh, get down to business here. I, I um, at some point, the city's gonna wanna, I know we're in transition right now, Bill, and I get that. I don't want to sound the wrong way, but at some point, the council, the good news is the council, we're getting surveys. About these committees and all these task forces right now. I received one this afternoon, I filled it out. Um, one of the committees I saw that was still on there is the restroom committee, which seems to have been washed right now. For various reasons, um, but when we're ready, I would like to bring it back. And uh, redesign it a little or recommend some redesigns, I did write in some things to it. I think bathrooms are still a priority in the city, along with childcare. Um, so I think we do need to have a restroom committee still. Um, and I did mention a few things with task forces, what my, the homelessness task force. On that as well, and I sent that out to uh, our members in case we needed, in case they didn't get it from. Um, the city, but my point is, I'm hoping that we can, as soon as the transitions are complete and. The triaging is uh, reduced a little bit, uh, that we can bring that committee back in some form. And lastly, I did put on the agenda for the next task force discussing, you know, the same thing. Tori brought up around the, this idea of municipalities, um, you know. Having the money instead of the state, and I have concerns about that. And I also have concern about the, about cities having that. Um, and I also have concerns about S ninety-one on the regional, um. A regional run situation with our caps. So again, it's all going to be about working together and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Anybody else, can we move on? All right. It is time to move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of items D?
I will move that, Jack, I just would like to um. Take my name off the approval of the minutes of a meeting that I wasn't even on the council for, and I think the same is true for Ben. But I'll move the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item D, just one second while we're teeing up to, to talk about that. Just want to remind council members, I realize sometimes you just realize it now, but. If, if you think you're gonna pull something off, if we can know in advance, just to make sure we have the right people there or be prepared to answer questions, it's always really super helpful. I realize sometimes you only think of it now, but we do have the folks here, but just as general, that can help us help you better.
I knew it was gonna get pulled, so.
There you go.
I'm prepared, uh, when I understand you guys want Josh Dron, Planning Department. Uh, you want an update on the elevation projects. Um, so if you recall, um, the state of Vermont awarded Montpelier nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, to elevate up to three structures, they limited uh, the funds to three hundred thousand dollars per structure. We got their grant agreement um, from that award in September. Um, and then the next step was to secure a civil and structural engineering firm. Um, so we used the um. BPW's uh, statement of qualifications process to identify the top-rated um, civil and structural engineer firm, DeWolf and King. Or uh, DeWolf Engineering Associates in Montpelier here. Uh, we engaged them uh, in a scope and fee discussion. Um, and then came to an agreement, um, we executed that contract with them, I think it was in November or December. Uh, we then executed memorandums of understandings with the three property owners. Um, so those had been executed, the next step was to secure architectural services to complete the design team. That went along with the engineers, um, we created that uh, request for a proposal. Um, in January and issued that in January, um, and received proposals, they were due back January thirty-first. Um, we were uh, ready to submit that for your consideration on February twelfth. Uh, and then there were some concerns by the property owners, they wanted to discuss it. Um, and so since that time, we've had several meetings to discuss their concerns uh, around the cost, um, really. And so I worked with the architectural firm, we only got two proposals um, for one. Um, and so the, the one um. That you have here, Stevens and Associates, is the one that the planning department was recommending. Um, and I think you're all familiar with their work, um. And, and so uh, we, I've been working with them to sort of adjust their uh, scope to include. Um, the mechanical, electrical and plumbing design, right? So that because of the state requirements, right? These projects need to be NFIP compliant, they need to be ASCE twenty-four compliant. Um, which means like the whole structure needs to not crumble in the next flood. And all of the systems need to be watertight, right? That's, that, that expertise is going to provide, um. And so we got an additional add-on scope of MEP services onto their proposal. Um, and I think there, in the conversation with property owners, um, there was a question of whether or not. Um, uh, the process could change, right? Um, because once we get the design team completed, they would do the foundation work, uh, do the MEP designs. And then we would put it out to bid for a, a general contractor um, to work it in their, in their queue. These projects have to get done before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, that's the period of performance uh, by the state of Vermont. And, and so I think there was some concern, um, at least with one property owner, that um. The cost of the contract and the timing wasn't going to work. Um, and so that's why we had some additional conversations. And I think where we are now at least, um, is I don't know if all of them have decided which path to go forward. The city identified plan or wanting to manage the project themselves. Um, which we have been amenable to discuss, um. I don't think that's what anybody else in the state is doing, although they've, they've inquired because they're just starting their own process. We are several months in front of them, um, and so we've been able to give them feedback on how they could restructure. Um, a, a similar process, so. Um, that's where we are today, I think, uh, my intention is to work with all the property owners to make sure that they're all comfortable. With whatever process we go forward with, and that's whether that's the city. Hiring, you know, securing architectural services and then um, securing an elevation company, a general contractor to do their projects. Or to have the flexibility for a property owner to take it over themselves. So that they are more comfortable with the timing aspect and the cost.
So to be clear, so we've got three separate contracts up for approval tonight for each of the properties, is that?
It's, it's actually just one contract, the engineering was actually six different contracts because it was. Structural and civil for each property, but this would just be one, one contract.
And if the council approves this, does this lock any of the homeowners into going down this way? Or do they still have the flexibility of?
Well, to be clear, I think the wording in the action item was for you to give us the ability to approve a contract. Um, because again, there's still some uncertainty from at least one property owner about whether or not they want to participate in our. Process, so the contract that I have from Stevens and Associates is to do three sites. If they reduce that to two sites, um, I think I put that in the action item. The contract would be reduced, I think, by about a twelve thousand dollars, I think.
I see in the agenda that there, I, maybe I'm missing this, but I see that there's four action item like cover sheets. And it says supporting documents, there's a proposal, but I don't see any additional information in the packet, is, am I missing something? Do you guys see anything?
An action item approved contract is the recommended action for four different items here.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure I sent a contract to be uploaded with the packet, but.
Don't see a contract.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't do that, so, um, if I, if I didn't send it to get uploaded, um, then that's my bad, um.
Would it be a problem if we? Say, well, we really think we need to see the contract, so maybe, so we should take it up next meeting?
Um, is it a problem? I mean, it's not a problem, it's just, it would extend the process out to more further. To where it's been extended two months from when it should have been originally considered, um, so. I'm happy to, to discuss the contract with you uh, and, and identify the price.
Okay, uh, Carrie.
Um, so my understanding from reading this was that you asked the property owner who's considering.
Um, so my understanding from reading this was that you asked the property owner who's considering managing themselves, um, to tell you by some point in this week, maybe by the end of this week. And so if we were to wait until the next council meeting, then you would know for sure. And you'd be able to give us actual numbers in the contract. You'd be able to have a contract that says this is what we're doing. And then you could also, if, if this only for two properties, you could give us more information about what's going to happen with the, the money that's allocated for that third property.
Is everybody just realizing now during the council meeting that there was no contract in your packet that was given to you on Friday?
I think that's the case.
Ah, okay.
All right, folks, what do you say? We push this to the next meeting?
I don't mind sitting up here for hours if we can get it done today, you know?
Yeah, just now. From Josh, I forwarded it to us, our team, so I don't know.
Yep, I have, uh, four attachments right here. Sorry, Jim? There's, right, there's the cover letter, an action item, and the elevation contract all attached. So folks.
What are we doing right now? We're waiting for a contract.
What's your pleasure here?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, Josh. Like, I, I think it's, it's tough to approve a contract that we haven't read. And I'm, you know, I understand the urgency of the timeline here, and I think, um, you know, I hope that we can make up the time, but I personally would really want the time to read it.
Maybe set up a special meeting just for this, like a Zoom meeting just for this contract?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I would be happy to do that, make time for this. And if, if I could just say one other thing too, you know, I just, I appreciate that this is really like, this kind of elevation program is really unusual, right? I mean, and hopefully it remains unusual. It's challenging. I think, you know, the first time for the city to do it in a long time. I really appreciate the hard work that you have put into it. And I also just appreciate the residents who have to deal with this kind of uncertainty and how uh, traumatic this entire experience has been. And I just, you know, my hope would be that, um, that I would love to see it continue to be a collaborative process as opposed to somebody feeling the need to break off. I think these are public funds coming from the state and we have responsibilities as a city to help ensure that they're, they're used well. And I, and I think also just, these folks shouldn't be on their own and they're, they haven't been. You know, you've been with them and I, I would just like to see that kind of collaboration continue. Um, and, you know, and we need to step up too. And if that means like having another meeting to make sure we can approve the contract that we've read, I think, uh, we need to do that. So I, I just want to thank you and hope that the collaboration can continue. Uh, and that maybe that means like regular check-ins, um, but how we can be helpful.
Um, let, let's take this, talk about scheduling, uh, before we adjourn tonight.
I was just going to suggest sometime on Monday, you know, we could do a five-minute.
Yeah, I, I was thinking Monday or even Friday is the time I want it, but yeah. Okay.
Get everything posted, so. We'll set something up tomorrow with the schedule, but.
All right, great. Well, thanks for the flexibility to get something done sooner.
Thanks, Josh. Item number six, GMT route update.
Hi, good evening. Christian Meyer, I'm the Director of Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. I'm here tonight as the Washington County Representative to the GMT, uh, Board of Commissioners. I have two items I just wanted to give the council an update on. One is, uh, propose revisions to the, the My Ride, uh, transit service here in Montpelier, the on-demand transit service, which essentially gives us all, uh, door-to-door service. Um, these, these adjustments are being precipitated based on the, the closing of the grant that funded that pilot. Um, B Trans has requested to Green Mountain Transit to study the issue and bring proposals. They've proposed two options. One would return to a full fixed route service. Um, and the second would create a hybrid where the Hospital Hill route up to, um, the mall, the hospital and Berlin Plateau, uh, would be fixed route within a, a circular, uh, on-demand service available in the downtown. Um, there'll be public meetings on these two options, uh, next week, uh, April second, uh, in person at Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission offices, uh, four thirty to five thirty. And a virtual meeting on April third, uh, at twelve, twelve P M. Um, the second item I wanted to bring up was a potential, uh, uh, transfer of service or operations from Green Mountain Transit to, uh, most likely, uh, an adjacent provider like Tri Valley Transit, which is active in Addison County and parts of Windsor and Orange County. Um, there's, there's no, there have been no decisions on this, and certainly as it progresses, I hope that the opportunity would be uh, made available to the council to meet with the new, uh, general manager, manager of the service goes forward. Right now, both organizations have said they're open to talking, open to, uh, recommendations as they come forward from, uh, either the legislature or B Trans directly. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I also could provide a brief memo to you on what I spoke about tonight. I didn't get it in the packet in time, but I'm happy to, you guys pass it around.
Thanks. Folks, anyone have any questions?
Memo? Yes, no?
Sorry, I do have one. Yeah, I, I would actually appreciate the memo, particularly on the difference between returning to a fixed route and the hybrid with My Ride. Like I would just, if to the degree that you're able to provide some nuance or context on that, it'd be helpful. And I'm happy to take it in right.
Yeah, if I didn't say, one thing I want to want to stress is as GMT approached this, these adjustments, the goal was to maintain the service area to the same, um, space, the geography as it's currently available. Uh, and with, with only minor adjustments, they've been able to do that, um, through deviations, which means you could call in and request a route be deviated to your address. Um, just as when you are returning, you would have to request to the bus driver. It's a little, it's an extra step, but it would still, uh, provide some level of service to that same service area, um, even without the My Ride option. I don't cover that in the memo, um, but I can also get more information from GMT in advance of those public meetings, uh, next week.
Christian, is this the memo dated March twenty-fourth to Montpelier City Council?
That's me, that's the one. You did get it?
We got that last night.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Um, there actually, so there is a, uh, map at the back of that memo, uh, that shows, um, current My Ride service area overlaid with the, um, well, it's overlaid on the, the, the My Ride, My Ride fixed route hybrid map. So you do see a dotted line around the edge that can compare.
I'm sure there are people who are going to be glad to see the return of the Hospital Hill service.
Sure. And again, I'm always here available to bring messages from, uh, the council or the city back to the Board of Commissioners of Green Island Transit. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Steve, are you seeing to be recognized on this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Steve Wood, I want to, I want to quit hearing that distraction. Now would be an opportune time for the council to heed my recommendation made over several years that we renegotiate, uh, invoke the terms and renegotiate the terms of our lease of our transit center first floor. If there's going to be a new operator coming in, that, we give that space with two, three bathrooms, uh, and private break space and private ticket counter, et cetera, for a dollar a year, and that's not fair. And if the new operator is going to come in, that, that is ideal spot for, in fact, we originally represented to the federal government that it was going to be a tourist information center. We fumbled that, and we, it's still not a tourist information center. But the emerg, the housing and the bathroom emergency necessitates that we take greater control of that space and use those two outward-facing public bathrooms even round the clock. Uh, they have electric locks that could be remotely triggered. But there's plenty of video surveillance there, so people could ask for evening access to the bathroom and some dispatcher could let them in. There, there's no rocket science to this other, that we have a motorized door that's never worked, uh, on the Taylor Street side. But my point is now would be the time, uh, that contract was manipulated by Frazier repeatedly to sell us short, throw us under the bus. And we are the citizens of Montpelier and we own that building and we've been selling it short. And it's time to reset that with the new operator coming in and trading the value of whatever space they do require, probably the break room, maybe the ticket counter for, uh, extension of the My Ride. My Ride is valuable. I think a better word would be detour rather than deviate because I know people who use it and they don't want to be called deviants, but, uh, thank you.
Next up, we have item seven, FEMA acquisition request from Resurrection Baptist Church.
Josh Jerome, Planning Department.
David Book, resident of Worcester. Moderator of Resurrection Baptist Church.
Um, so in you, as you know, um, in your action item, um, Resurrection Baptist Church located at one forty-four Elm Street, um, experienced, um, pre-significant flooding, um, in July twenty twenty-three, uh, the basement was completely filled, um, to get about ten inches of water onto the first, um, floor. Um, and I think you had a whole army of people from around, around the country come and, you know, help clean out, um, try to get the, the, the structure prepared for winter. Um, and then, you know, unfortunately, uh, weatherization did not, um, uh, was not effective. Um, and there were some, some, some pipes that burst, um, and some additional damage was caused in the structure um, during that time. And so, you know, I think they've been working with V M, um, throughout the last year, um, and then, and then us, uh, to request a buyout. Um, and every, every buyout situation is challenging. Um, and so as we've looked at this particular location and the structure, um, the planning department looked at how much water they got, where the location is in, in the floodplain, uh, the lot size, about one point three acres, um, parking lot. Uh, we determined that because they would also have to pass a benefit cost analysis with, uh, V M to, uh, so to qualify for the buyouts, um, and it really didn't seem that was possible, given the damage sustained because of the failed weatherization that we deter, planning department, um, looked at this site as being, um, a site that could be redeveloped. Um, it is walkable to the downtown. Um, it's a, it's a fairly large lot. Obviously, the public services are already there, um, and so we are recommending to not approve a buyout. Um, but I'm sure David would want to discuss, you know, why, um, they should have a buyout.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, I'd like to say a few things just to, uh, flesh out a little bit of what is stated in the statement that you have that Josh has alluded to. Um, there's some clarification, I think, that I would like to make. First of all, let me say quickly that this church was organized in nineteen seventy-six. It's been at its present location since that particular day. Now, it is the only Baptist church in Montpelier. It has been very active in community activities, being a founding, uh, group who put together the idea called now the Good Samaritan Haven. And moi was actually the founding director of the Haven. I served at the Haven as the director for ten years, the first ten years of its organization. And we continue to be supportive of community, uh, activities and concerns. Uh, there are four specific things I want to address quickly. I'll be as quickly as I can because I, I want you to get the full picture here. Um, Josh has alluded to a engineer's report that states, uh, for his interpretation that there was not substantial damage done to the building. And I would, would say to you that you need to read the entire report because you come across such statements as restoring the structure to pre-flood condition will require considerable funding. Ideally, the exterior faces of the foundation should be excavated and parched or short-created where possible, but at least at the south and east walls, this type of work is costly because hand shoveling is required to some extent because of utilities and since an excavator can only come so close to the foundation without delodging, dislodging stones. It is true that nowhere in the engineer's report does it say specifically there is no sub- substantial damage, but neither does it say anywhere in the report that there is substantial damage. Uh, secondly, the oil heating system was totally ruined because it was in the basement. So that heating system, that burst, uh, essentially was going to be removed anyway. Yes, there was some additional damage, obviously, not widespread though. Uh, we would have, have had to remove the radiator systems anyway. So that particular, uh, item, I think, can, can be, uh, appreciated. The other, I, the other thing to say in that regard is that we tried so hard to get contractors and people to come in and help us after the initial wave of volunteers left. They didn't want to fool with little old Resurrection Baptist Church, basically. They wanted to get the big jobs and that's where they went. Uh, we called numerous people to try to satisfy our desire to have it winterized the way it should have been. We could not find a single plumber who was willing to come in and blow it all out. So we did the best we could. It wasn't good enough. We admit that. Uh, it's also stated that, that there was no idea, no assurance anyway of where we got the information for the damages. And I, I don't quite understand that that information was given to FEMA. All of that information, the damage estimate came from licensed plumbers, electricians, contractors. I have the names and would be happy to share them with, uh, Josh if he so needs. Uh, and finally, uh, the, the parking lot, uh, is under lease. The lease runs out this coming year. Uh, it is leased by the, um,
Help me here. It's down the street.
Yeah, down the street. Uh, and I think I read, I couldn't find it this afternoon. I was looking for it. I think I read somewhere that the, the greenness of that property, uh, which has to be retained, uh, if it is bought out and demolished, uh, will accept a parking lot, unimproved parking lot. So if the city needs more parking, that whole area could be used for a parking. We have twenty-one spaces that are leased now, and I, I can easily think that you, you could have a forty-five space area there. Uh, just so you know, uh, Resurrection Baptist Church still is in existence. It meets regularly every Sunday. It has not missed a Sunday in almost, uh, uh, two years since the flood. And we actually have grown since, since the flood. And I'm very excited about that, obviously. And, uh, it is our intention to return to, we're meeting now out in, in a location, the old Seventh Day Adventist School in Berlin on Vine Street. We intend to return to downtown Montpelier. We feel We intend to return to downtown Montpelier. We feel that Montpelier is our mission. It's our goal. We don't want to leave Mon- Montpelier. We're not about to fold. After we have been through what we have been through in the last three or four years, ain't nobody gonna move us out of Montpelier. I guarantee you. The devil is not gonna have his way in that regard. Uh, we are, we certainly know that, I'm not sure how the finances work on a buyout. But we certainly are not expecting to receive the value of the property before it was flooded. We'd be happy to settle for a buyout that's far less than that. So that's all I've got to say. I, and I, I do want to say one thing. Other than that, I really, and this is gonna be, this is gonna sound strange. It's different. We've had nothing but cooperation from FEMA, the state, and from Josh's department. I appreciate that. We. We came in a little late for some reasons that that are not necessarily to necessary to explain. But we really have had good communication until this week. I tried to reach our man, our manager. Phone's been disconnected. He doesn't answer emails. He may have gotten canned. I don't know. Do you know?
Who?
Uh, his name is Charles Williams.
At FEMA?
From FEMA. Oh, I don't know. Okay. Very unlike him not to respond. Thank you. Yeah.
Uh, just to confirm, uh, that is correct when you, when FEMA goes through a buyout process, that, you know, the parcel. Is to be green space in perpetuity, but it can be used for a parking lot or public restroom.
And if it becomes a parking lot. I assume it can't be paved?
No, it cannot. It, you know, just crushed down gravel.
We had to stay on that too.
And that's not considered impervious surface?
Well, technically, I think, I think it is in our case and my, how Montpelier looks at it, but I think there's a way to do it that you can mitigate. That runoff.
Uh-huh. And and Josh, am am I right in thinking that? Part of the confusion or misunderstanding here might be between what. An ordinary person would look at a structure and say, well, that's clearly substantial damage and what. How FEMA assesses substantial damage and their definitions?
Yeah, so, uh, and maybe.
Mike, do you have any answer to that?
Oh, Mike Miller, planning director. So, um, by definition, historic structures cannot be substantially damaged.
And that counts as.
And their building is historic. So even if it has eight hundred thousand dollars worth of damage to an eight hundred thousand dollar building. Under the rules, it's not substantially damaged. So that's why they, they don't get that first trigger that other buyouts that we've talked about have had. Was that they're not technically substantially damaged.
And we've had some other buildings in the city that have been like that too, right?
Yes.
But are there not avenues set up to avoid that historical designation?
Uh, that would be a much bigger process that you'd have to work with the state to go through to decertify the building. Uh, and usually that's going to require something that would say that it should not have been certified in the first place or have something. That effect, but that's, that gets outside of my expertise in that, in that field of of how things get determined, but.
And and to zip to, zip to the main question, the, the main reason that, uh, that your department doesn't. Think it's appropriate for buyout is because you think there are other uses other than uh. Bare space that uh could be put, put on, on that land.
Uh, yeah, we've, so we factored in a couple of aspects, one of which is, you know, it's not, um. It's not on the riverside. It is on the uphill side uh of Elm Street. And it's a parcel of one point three acres in size, so we would have to permanently conserve that space. Um, in perpetuity and looking at that space in our downtown, looking at the need for housing. Um, this would be a prime, prime space for somebody to come in and demolish the building and put in. You know, uh, uh, one point three acres. I mean, you could put a lot of housing on one point three acres uh in a district that has no density requirements. So, I mean, it's.
Thanks, Mike. Carrie. I thought, but it's okay, Sal.
Mike, uh, on the, um. The image that shows the, the, the uh property lines, it, it, it had, it includes a forested area that heads up the hill towards the park. Uh, is that, I mean, I'm trying to remember. How steep is that? I mean, is that at all developable or are you talking about just the?
Yeah, no, the steep slope certainly wouldn't be. I don't know how big the, the flat usable portion of the site is, but it's a decent.
I think the document says there's thirteen thousand square feet that could be developed, I think.
And how, how far below the D F E is that, you know?
Um, well, if they got ten inches into their first floor, then you're probably looking at, um. It's gonna be two feet above that. Ten inch in the, in the first floor. So you're probably talking.
Five feet off the ground.
Yeah, probably five feet off the ground is what the requirement would be. Yeah. Yep.
I think it's actually, it's less than that. Uh, the elevation, elevation line.
Elevation line, five twenty-four kind of goes right through the building. Um, and five twenty-five kind of touches the back corner and baselet elevation. Um, right there is five twenty-five point five, I believe. So.
So the, the grade is heading up toward the whole side in the back, yeah.
Yep.
The complicating thing is that that building is built in two phases. The old house was built in about nineteen, eighteen seventy. And then in nineteen sixty, uh, there was an addition. The addition, uh, has the sanctuary. It also just has a crawl space, does not have a basement underneath, but it's in two different sections.
Thanks. Any other questions? Jim?
Uh, first of all, I apologize that you can't see me. For some reason, on a tablet. When I put myself on, it doesn't allow me to turn the sound all the way down. Even when I push it all the way down, and so it's distracting for Bill and I, who's ever sitting beside me, so I'm gonna have to work on that. But it's something to do with the city site because I can do it for everything else. Um, so I'm, you know, being new to this, the buyout is, you're talking about the city buying it out?
Uh, well, the city, but yes, they would take over ownership. It would be funded by FEMA.
And what, what would be the cost to tear down the building?
I, I don't know.
Probably a hundred thousand dollars, maybe?
That's what we've been told.
Okay, um.
Sorry, Jim, just to be clear, though, what we're talking about, FEMA would pay for, right? So the city wouldn't actually pay for it. FEMA would pay for it. And then it would be green space in perpetuity, that the city would own the green space.
So I was gonna say, if we had to pay for it, could we have a controlled burn, give the fire department practice? And it could come down pretty quick.
Any other thoughts or questions from anybody?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I just want to say I'm really sorry for your trouble, you know? I mean, it sounds like you've been incredible neighbors in our community and this is a really tough situation. I'm glad to hear that your church is. Still meeting and coming together, you know, I, I am gonna vote no on this and I, um. You know, I just feel like that it's really important. Perpetuity is a really long time. And, um, you know, I think we really need to think about the tax revenue of our downtown and taxable properties.
We preach about that all the time.
I appreciate it. And I, I mean, I, I mean, and I appreciate what your, your community has done. Uh, you're part in our Montpelier community, but I just want to be transparent with you that I, I think it. I, I, I think we should vote no because I think we need to preserve the opportunity for taxable revenue on that parcel for the future.
Thank you.
Okay, we would, uh, the chair would entertain a motion. And. You can say you're voting no or you can say you're voting yes, depending on how the motion is phrased, and if the motion is phrased. Uh, to, uh, to not purchase the property, then a yes vote would be. Not voting on the property, but I'll let someone frame the motion.
Yeah, I'm thoroughly confused at this point, so, um, but I'll, I'll try. I, I would make a motion that the council decide not to participate in the FEMA buyout for this parcel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those favors, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thanks for coming in. I support what other people have said. Uh, thank you. All right. Item eight, city manager transition. And what we have. Um. In my, uh, one of my most recent weekly meetings with the, the city manager, I asked him. You know, we, we'd been talking about how, uh. Uh, how the process could be managed. Um, assuming that, uh, we would probably want to, uh. Retain someone to, uh, to manage this professionally. I asked them to put together an R F P, which, which we have before us, but, uh. And so technically, the only thing that we would have to vote on tonight is to approve, uh, the R F P. Uh, there's obviously lots of other questions involved in this, including. How internally within, uh, city government we want to manage this, whether we want to have. What kind of public input we want to have, what kind of, uh, city council. Uh, participation we want to have in, in this, uh. Uh, in this process, we do not need to. Make those decisions to, tonight, but I really do think that we should at a minimum approve the, uh, R F P so we can get it started. Ben?
Do you need a motion to do that so then we can go into discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I move that we, uh, approve the R F P.
Second.
Okay. All right. Is, did you want to start the discussion?
I, I think we should do this R F P. I think it's, uh. Uh, just personally, I think it's really important to professionalize the search and there are people that do this for a living and do it well, and I think we should cast a wide net to try and find. The best firm that we can that will deliver for our city. Um, you know, I would also just say. I, I really appreciate that there are a lot of decisions that the council needs to make about what this process looks like. I think actually retaining a search professional that can describe that process to us, propose processes. Is, uh, really an important thing to do. I would make the suggestion that we. Uh, form a subcommittee of the, of the council, if this is possible, if we form a subcommittee of the council of, I think, three members, one from each district. To work with Tanya, the human resources director, to evaluate the, uh, responses to the R F P when they come in. Uh, make a recommendation to the full council. Uh, you know, I don't know whether that's narrowed down to two or three finalists, depending on how many people respond to the R F P. Certainly, the full council should have access to all of the responses to the R F P, but I think just for the process of moving things along and having a conversation. I think a subcommittee would be the way to go for that first pass.
Jim?
I would just like to change one part of that, Ben. I would just like to say, why don't we take the three most qualified people who know the most about this? Forget about one from each district. I mean, if. I mean, let's just pick the three best of us that have the expertise that maybe some of us don't, and if it. Maybe there's a district that doesn't have somebody like that and a district has two, I'd like the best people to be part of that subcommittee. Who are most knowledgeable about this. That's all.
Carrie?
Yeah, I just want to also speak in favor of this R F P process. I, I think, um. We're not going to be able to do this well without some professional help. And when I read this R F P, it looks to me like it includes. Plenty of flexibility and opportunity and engagement with the city council so that. Whoever we hire is not going to be making decisions without us and is not going to be telling us what to do, but is going to be working with us and guiding us so that. I mean, this is going to have to be a process of a lot of engagement from city council and from the public and from the rest of the staff. And this R F P looks to me like we could get that. Um, so I feel comfortable with it and I would like to approve it tonight.
Ben?
Thank you. Like Matt suggested, I also, uh, suggested this before to have a subcommittee from the city council. Um, to help the transition, uh, process plus the hiring. And my understanding was, subcommittee will come up with the ideas. With the support of city staff, like Bill just explained these things. So are we doing it like reverse, approving this plan first and having the subcommittee later? Because my experience is, if we have a subcommittee first decide that, then they can decide what to do with this proposal. Then they can bring us, yeah, we propose. If they want to do changes on this proposal or other things, then city council can listen to your proposal and also they can give. More, um, details if they want to add. I agree with the idea. You have issues, fire it, search firm. But I'm just asking the process wise, because I hope the, the other version.
Well, the, the motion is to approve the, uh, R F P. So we can get that out and start, uh, finding our, the recruit, the professional we're going to be working with. Quickly, um, and then Ben's made a suggestion to do a. Subcommittee, which I do not believe is part of the motion. It was an observation of what we should do. Let me just, uh.
Sorry.
That's okay. Is, is that?
That's correct. Sorry to have confused the two things. I made a motion about approving the R F P. And then I'm happy later to make another motion about forming a subcommittee.
Okay, and, Ben.
Because I asked for a motion about this. That's what I am asking. I already asked a motion, right? Or I, did I ask for a motion or I send the email proposing? Let's have, let's create a subcommittee and I think. Uh, you and Bill said it will be on the agenda.
So this is the item that's on the agenda and the mayor has to prepare, but you could sort of make a different motion or voting.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I was trying to understand because some people reach out to me and they read this plan on the Times Argus. And they are saying, why should they decide it? They would go and accept this plan without public input. And I tried to explain that this is not the city's plan because we haven't decided yet. So I think there's some kind of commission, be con- uh, confusion because this information is already. On the local newspaper. So that's what I was trying to understand.
I mean, I can't, the, the newspaper gets the same packet information that the council gets and they wrote an article about it, you know, we haven't. Presumed that anything, I just made a recommendation at the mayor's, uh, request. What I'd say is that. I, I think public in- involvement is extremely important as is staff involvement, everything else, and that is what the person. Would do would be to guide the council and say, how do you want to engage the public? How do you want to do this and get input as, as far as. What are the qualities you're looking for? What is the job description? What does the ad look like? All those kind of things and decisions to be desired, but you, you need, I think, uh, and most communities of our size use this, um. To have someone who does this walk you through that, but the decisions still lie here and with the community, not. This is simply getting the ball rolling, not the final decision, in, in my mind.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just want to clarify it for the public because they are asking me and I have a responsibility to bring those things here. Thank you.
Well, you, well, you, if you're telling people who ask you about it that no decisions have been made yet, that's the right answer.
Yeah, I just want to confirm. Yeah, thanks, uh, down here.
Yeah, uh.
You cannot.
Adrian.
Um, I, I, I agree with that and I think, and I, I know, Helen, kind of like what you're thinking of in terms of the process, but when I did review the R F P. Um, one of the pieces in here that I think what you're talking about is having. The needs assessment and profile development, which is to engage with city elected and appointed leadership, key stakeholders, bringing in. Those key people as part of this process and that is not going to be left out. That is part of, is part of this R F P. But what I like about this process is having what Ben said, professionalizing this process and having. You know, someone who is outside guiding us, supporting us, telling, you know, telling us what type of committee we should form. Like who should be involved? How many times should we meet? How many public meetings should we have in terms of like visioning and needs assessment and profile development? And outlining that strategy? So I like having someone help us with that rather than us. Trying to figure it out on our own, which I think would be really time consuming and very stressful. So. I will definitely support this RFP because I think it does allow for the flexibility to have that committee that. We will need, and that's what the public is asking for the public input. The profile development, the updated job description, the vision that will happen. We will just have a professional helping us through that process. So I think that is, I think this is a very good outline and I will support this.
Sally, you have your hand up too.
I just, I. I, I agree with. Most of what's been said. I think this is other than the actual decision for the. City manager, we ultimately come to. This is, you know, the next most important decision and. Unless we can find a substantial. Something substantial missing from this RFP, which I could not, and I greatly appreciate. Bill's having put the effort into putting it together. It's. It's as complete as I think it needs to be. And I think it gets the process started, so I. I support it as well.
Yes. Anything further? Any comments from members of the public before we proceed to vote on this motion? Sorry, go ahead, Helen.
I just want to highlight that I supported too. But I had to ask a question that came to me. So I want to clarify for everyone who is listening to us. And who will read the notes. So I just want to say that I hope people do not misunderstand. I agree with all of you because my name was like came up a couple of times. That's why I felt I need to say something. Thanks.
The notes don't get that grand.
All right. If we're ready for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. There we are. There's our first step done. Ben.
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I was wondering if we could think about that next step about the subcommittee or is that something that needs to be a different meeting agenda item or?
Well. Depending on who. Responds to the RFP. Different consultants may have different visions for.
No, I think what I'm referring to, Jack, is the idea of the RFP is going out. When the RFPs come back, I think a subcommittee of the council should review those with Tanya. Right? Review them in depth and ask questions, have conversations about them, and then make a recommendation. To the full council along, you know, share all the applications, but I think we need a small group to really dig in and digest them. And so what I'm suggesting now, I don't know if it's appropriate to do it now or not, but to form a subcommittee. Of the council that could work with Tanya to review the responses that we get to the RFP and selected. And that's not necessarily the same subcommittee that like. Does all kinds of stuff later in the process. It's just to select the consultant that could help us.
And that's the motion that you made, right?
I'm making it right now. Yes.
Yep. And did you get that, John?
I move that we form a subcommittee of the council to work with Tanya to. Yep. I move that we form a subcommittee of the council consisting of three city council members. To work with Tanya, the human resources director, that when the responses to the RFP come back, that we. Work to evaluate those responses and make a recommendation to the full council about a consultant to hire.
And is there a second? Any discussion on that? Yeah, Bill, Jim.
I would not like to be considered on that committee. I'm going to be taking on the negotiations with every. Negotiating team and I got enough on my plate and this is not my expertise. So I'm going to say right now, I do not want to be part of that subcommittee.
Noted.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Are there, are there, next question is, are there volunteers to be on this? RFP review committee. All right, we've got three hands up.
We got your three districts then.
There we are. Is there a motion to approve?
Call it anything you want.
And will I learn this, right? So can we call it like city council subcommittee instead of making it very limited, saying like.
Sure.
Whatever is the story. I forgot. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to appoint Ben, Helen and Carrie to the subcommittee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Item nine. Action to implement the budget sprinkler tax credit. Is you, Bill?
I'll just go quickly unless people have more detailed questions. You may recall when we did the budget that we just passed. There were a couple of things, including. Taking. Reducing some of the sprinkler tax credits and increasing some of the ambulance fees and adding new fees that the budget was based on. And we wanted to make sure we took those actions. As soon as possible, so we didn't forget them. And also particularly with the ambulance fees so that we could get advantage of this last quarter for billing of this fiscal year as well.
So for. For this sprinkler tax credit. That requires. Amending our ordinances. Well, we have a, I believe it's a resolution.
Okay, I have a resolution. So I think. You would just be amending the resolution. To. Take out the commercial buildings that are required. By law to have sprinklers and it would just be those that either. Either residential buildings or those that voluntarily put in sprinklers would get the credit.
Okay. Carrie.
Can I just clarify that of the documents we've got here, we've got one that says sprinkler tax credit amendment, red line edits, and that's like the track changes one. And then the next one. Sprinkler tax credit amendment. That is what the final version would look like. Is that right? That's what it looks like. I just want to make sure that's.
I'm looking at the experts, but I believe that's correct.
Okay.
I believe that's correct, Carrie.
Yep. We had the final version ready to be signed.
Yeah, I actually, I presented a red line version so you could see the changes. They were primarily related to the budget and there was just a few like minor cleanup. I don't know if we corrected as well.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah. So I'll move that we accept, we adopt the resolution to amend. But we adopt the resolution to amend.
Sure.
That we amend the sprinkler resolution.
Sprinkler credit resolution.
Yep.
That we amend the sprinkler credit resolution.
I move that we amend. The sprinkler tax credit resolution.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up ambulance fees. Are you here for this too, Sarah?
Wasn't planning to speak on it.
Get the fire chief here.
There's fire chief here.
But I think the short version again is we would be increasing our fees, ambulance fees to match those of the districts and also adding a. Fee for our treatment, but not transport. So, you know, we could, I'll let the chief explain that. He worked hard on this, so I'll give him his day.
Good evening, Derek Libby, Fire Chief. The packet that you received very well spells out where we stand today in table number one. Our current charges. Our neighboring EMS. Agencies and where their rates are. And this is really. An effort, obviously, as we went through the budget process, but to reduce subsidizing the services from the tax base. Table two shows Medicare Medicaid rates. So those would be write offs from the billing. And then table three counts of incidents and then. Table four is what we're asking is the proposed rate increases. Which takes where we are today and brings us in line with the neighboring agencies. And adds the no treatment, transport call type. Which effective July 1st, 2024. Became eligible to recoup expenses that are. Born to the cities on treating a patient. Using durable goods, using personnel, using. Amulets and recovering some of that expense. You'll see the coverage for out of town or out of service communities. What that speaks to is when a career service or volunteer service doesn't staff. And relies on us to cover their call base that they're receiving. Support for and not able to staff. So we're going out of town. And taking their call load, which. Impacts us by having to backfill the station. With overtime personnel. So we're trying to. Reduce some of that subsidy on the city.
It's great. I think it's great that we're getting this done so fast so we can start collecting right away. Is there a motion?
Thank you for putting this together.
You're welcome.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. All right, next up. We have. A proposal to. Conduct a housing needs assessment. Ben, I think you're up.
Actually, I think the, the motion was to ask. The planning staff to go out and create a plan for doing the housing plan assessment, to go out and. You know, see how long it would take if there was consultant available to do it or how they wanted to do it. But to basically come back to us with a plan for conducting. A housing needs assessment and. You know, I just think that this is really critical. You know, I know that we're, there's, we've talked about the country club road development at some point, doing a housing needs assessment or. That maybe a developer could bear the cost of that. But I really think that we need to be thinking holistically about our community, about really understanding the data on our housing situation at a really granular level. That looks citywide. And you know, I'll just say in my professional work, when I work with communities on community economic development and housing comes up, the first thing. People ask is, do you have a housing needs assessment? And I just, I just feel like if. We're talking about the kinds of investment that we're going to be making in our community around housing, that this is the kind of. The baseline that we can track all of that. And I think the sooner we have that information, the better. And so I am hoping that you all agree to ask the planning staff to come up with a plan for doing a housing needs assessment. Within the next four months that we have the final product. And I also think that it's important that it follow best. Follow best practices of what a housing needs assessment is. And that's why I included the Vermont Housing Needs Assessment Guide from Vermont Housing Finance Authority. That supports a lot of this kind of work. So. I, you know. That's my motion. My motion is that we instruct planning staff to come up with a plan to conduct a housing needs assessment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So any discussion? So.
Ben, do you envision it covering the entire? The entire city?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's. I think that's really.
I mean, it would be of substantial use in the growth center and so on at Country Club, but it's, I think it's needed throughout.
I agree.
To update. Okay, great.
And Carrie, I think I saw your hand. Nope. Any other members of the council? Steve.
Steve Whitaker. I didn't, I didn't put him up to this, but I've been asking for that housing needs assessment for quite some time. And I'm glad to see the fresh member of the council. Push this forward, very well prepared and organized. But we cannot complete our phase two country club road plan. Without the information from this needs assessment. How many units of what type and size are needed where? If we're going to try to invite options and survey the population of folks that have two people, one or two people living in a big empty home downtown. We need to offer them some alternatives. Would they be willing to move to Country Club Road and have a smaller unit? We can't really offer them transportation right now because our planning is so. Delayed. But. What types of housing could? Be up there that would. Create. Trip generation compatible with the capacity or the limited capacity intersection. Requires that we carefully think through. What areas are blood prone? What areas are? Good for infill? What can Country Club Road accommodate and then offer those? Options to the public on. What would you vote for in a way of size and. And cost. In the way of housing options. Because. Without that information, we cannot complete the phase two. Again, we can't do that in six weeks. But you need to be moving to get that underway. The fact that we have a planning, a very expensive planning department, Mike Miller costs us $160,000 a year with benefits. And that he's kept insisting we don't need a housing needs assessment. Tells me what we do need is a housing needs assessment and not, not a Mike Miller.
I'm just going to respond to that. We don't need a housing needs assessment to do phase two. That's just something Steve's made up. The reason Mike Miller has said we don't need a housing needs assessment is that it's very for this project. Is that? We've looked at the county and statewide. Needs assessments which have been done and it's very clear we need. Tons of housing of all kinds. So no matter what we build. There's a need for it. So the presumption was not that it didn't need to be done, but that a developer would decide and propose to us what. They would do for that project. Have a housing and needs assessment for the whole city is a whole different thing and it will help us figure out our housing strategy and all those kinds of things. It is absolutely not critical for phase two, as Steve continually calls it, because we know we need. Big houses, we need small houses, multifamily, we need single family, we need all kinds, whatever, whatever they do, we are drastically short on all of them. A housing needs assessment is not going to get into. You know, interviewing people whether they want to move to new different, you know, places. I mean, that's just fallacy. It will look at what, where to short, what do we need? What's the market bear? What are they, that kind of thing? So. You know, don't be, don't fall for the smokescreen. We, we should use this and you know, we will put together a plan, but. But we are, we are, we will be moving ahead. I'll be talking more about the process for phase two under my report later tonight, but. So yes, I think those are two separate and completely distinct things. So.
Just wondering if we can add a timeframe. To the staff's. Preparation. I mean. Is it, is it in the?
It is, sorry. I, in the, in the packet, I asked for them to come back to the next meeting with the plan. For it and you know, I honestly don't know how long it takes to do a housing needs assessment of this size. So I asked, you know, within. Try and come up with a plan that they could get it done within four months, but you know, I think we, we see what they say, but I'm hoping that they can bring the plan back at the next meeting.
And I'll just note, we also don't have any funding.
All right. Bill or Jim, sorry.
Did you read the one that was done in 2009, I think?
Jim, could you pull a microphone toward yourself, please?
So I just asking Ben if he'd read the 2009 one and. What he felt about that.
You know, I didn't read it in enough detail. I mean, I, I, yeah, I wouldn't want to comment on it. I think this. Really the conditions have changed quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, imagine the needs are very much kind of the same, but. Conditions, a lot of things have changed in 15 years. I just wondered if you had seen it and you found it deficient or something. So.
All right, we're ready for the vote. If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving along to item 12. Establishing platform for districts on the city council webpage. And. Councilor Cone, that's your proposal.
All the public input we receive from our. District two residents show that they really want. More connection, communication and transparency from the city. So I was just like working on it and I saw. Bill and Kelly are going to that ISAM conference. I said, let me check their agenda, right? What kind of things they are. Talking about this year for like a future foresight. About municipal governments. Then I saw one specific session about how. Municipal governments can create more public engagement through. Their tools. And I thought, oh, how about we have like a specific. One page for each district counselors. Now we have our face, right? And there is a link. For people to go and see our email address. I thought maybe instead of just going to our email address. When they click our picture, they have a one page that we can put, oh. These are the initiatives I'm working on. These are the like inputs I receive from you. Very simple, but. But uh which will create uh. Transparency in a better way. That's why I just want to ask um. Kelly, Bill and Evelyn if they have any ideas, and my proposal was. I am okay for them attend that session, come back and inform us. Because probably they will be talking about these things, then we can learn more. What are the plans, what are the future uh ideas, uh then maybe. After their presentation to the city council, we can decide how we want to move forward, because it is very important to me. To communicate uh with my residents. As an individual, I try to from Watch Forum, we have a kind of a district email list. But it is only like eighty people in that list, and in our district, one thousand people leave, right? And CD page is the main source for them to learn anything about. How we are doing on the city council, what we want to share with them, and we can decide what to include. That uh page, um that's why I just want to bring this uh issue um for a city council. Uh attention and maybe we can consider something to do together, and again. I just want to wait until uh Bill and Kelly uh come from the ISAM con- conference, because that's the topic they will. Discuss there, but I'm okay if they have other ideas for us to share uh tonight. I'm okay also to hear that. But my main uh goal is to. Improve the public engagement and transparency, which we have been talking uh for last three years um since. Since I was on the council. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. John, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm just, as the election administrator, uh I advise you to be very careful about this, because when election season rolls around. Um if it looks like election. If it looks like you're promoting yourself for election, I think using city resources or city time, that's um a lot, for a lot of reasons, that's a big no-no. Um and uh including ones that could potentially get us in some trouble. So I would just say whatever you have in mind. Keep it broad, because when that season rolls around again, if you've got somebody up for reelection, talking about how wonderful they are on the website. That's that gets us into some sketchy territory. That'd be my only only recommendation.
Yeah, it's a good point. That's why I want to bring it to our attention and we can discuss and decide. We can limit the. I don't know, we can talk about it. It's a good point, but my idea was not promoting ourselves. My idea was. Showing what we are doing as a city council and each city councillor and um.
That's where I get worried. Is that it could, if you did it wrong, if you weren't careful with that, then something that each city councillor is doing. Looks like a city councillor pamphlet for reelection. So that's all I'm advising. So you might want to keep it broad, so you don't want to walk.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's why, again, that's why I just propose. To discuss this and then hear from um Evelyn, uh Bill and uh Kelly. What they can bring to us. Uh I am proposing the idea. I'm not proposing the details. And the structure, so it will come from uh uh the professionals.
But we do look forward to chatting with our peers next week about some of this. I I just note that um. You know, we've actually, we did make some reductions to our staff capacity to do this and also took away the Zen City. Platform uh that is our prime transparency platform with surveys and projects. Where I think you'll be hearing later tonight that we're hoping to actually maintain that this year, but we'll talk to you about that later. But and if we can, that's a great robust thing. We could set up, you know, projects in the various districts. You know, this is what's going on in District Three, this is what's going on District Two, you know, whether it's, we already do a lot of that. Sort of in the fifty W news, but any other initiatives are happening. Um so I think there's a lot of ways we could structure it, and and we already own for now the tools to do it. We just have to make sure we. And actually have the capacity to do it and we keep. Otherwise, we're going to be really struggling.
But Pella, you're not asking us for us to take any action tonight. You're broaching the topic for future discussion.
So in in my um note to all the council, I put it that I wanna. If it is possible to see a proposal from uh city staff after. They attend the conference. So this is just an idea I just want to discuss tonight.
Um Adrian and Carrie. We we gotta fix the.
I know. Um just as I was thinking about this in terms of staff capacity and um how we've. I'm just the the folks that are are working on this, one of the ideas just to ponder in your heads. Um is thinking about utilizing, and I don't know when this comes in through security or whatever, but the high school has a program called Community Based Learning. And there's, if a student's interested in communications or website development or working with a city, this is an amazing opportunity for a high school student. To come in and support the city functions. My daughter's participated in it with the hospital and. Um I think it would be uh just an amazing opportunity for a high school student to. Provide this support to the city on a very specific project. Um and they're very open to these types of ideas, so just to think about that during your planning session.
Carrie.
I I'm just gonna reiterate the staff capacity issue, um just acknowledging that we have. Made changes to our staff such that we used to have a full-time communications coordinator. Who I would assume there should be a job that she might be able to take on. She's going to be doing at least two other jobs. And already is doing a lot of that, and so we don't have that capacity because we made the decision. In our budget process to reduce the staff that would work on this. So. I think it would be great if there's creative ideas. I would love to have a better way to communicate. I'm all for that, but I just want to acknowledge that. We may be limited in what we can do using city staff time.
That's why we will hear from them. Maybe they will say, yeah, we discussed these things. Unfortunately, we don't have capacity, or they will come, we discuss uh discuss all these things, we can make it happen one thing. So that's why I am asking their input. I'm not just saying that. So let's, I think, let's think. In a like a broader perspective and just hear from them first. If uh again, I'm all okay, whatever they will bring to us. But um I just want to feel that I know all the restrictions and like all the obstacles. But when we want to think about, in a visionary way, we cannot start with the obstacles, right? We can start what we can do. Uh but again, whatever they will bring to us, whatever they will make um. About this proposal, I uh trust their expertise, so I'm okay with it. I just want to. Discuss these things and hear their perspective. That's all. Thanks.
You know, I just heard of this communications platform called Signal. Steve.
Steve Whitaker again. I want to remind you that we, a couple of years ago, put fifty thousand dollars in the budget to revamp our website. Which is atrocious. Uh it's the most, it's a great impediment to. Public participation, to to find things, to navigate the calendar, to, it's just, it's just a mess, and yet. I tried to work and encourage our city clerk to be involved in that process, and he was not. Uh given opportunity to work and participate. Bad decisions were made. I don't know how much of the fifty thousand got spent, but. We don't have any in the budget now, but the platform that we're in. Uh we need to get out of, and there are other opportunities, there are other website companies who could. Come in, be invited to put a proposal, and that would be the time. I don't think you could take. Pig's ear and turn it into a silk purse by creating, I like the idea of board of each of our districts, but we also are talking about creating. You know, redistricting to six districts and having one rep per district. There's some discussion.
Uh I haven't heard that, but okay.
In any case, there are discussions that. Should be brought to bear in the light of how you design our website. For, we've got a lot of people who don't participate at all and who don't vote at all. And we need to get this ready before we uh spend a lot of time and energy on. Pig's ear.
So you know, I didn't push to get in. I just passed on my comments, but I passed on some of your comments too, I think. I meant to.
And we still got the same old crap website.
Did anyone prevent you from participating, John?
No, early on, way back when, in the first version, I was involved, but not the most recent one.
Okay, um it's eight twenty-five. It's uh just about time for our break, so we'll. Come back in about ten minutes. Special events policy. Who's presenting this? Chief? Who's doing this, or Kelly? Okay.
Right, um, so Kylan Murphy, Assistant City Manager, I've got Chief Lordensen here with me, and then on the line, um, we've got members from DPW, um, Kurt Monica, uh, Public Works Director, and then Corey Line, um, our Project Management Director. Um, and so what I'm gonna do is just kind of tee things up. You have a draft policy, um, in your packets, um, and then just provide a little bit of detail, um, and then the others are gonna provide some context for you. Um, so just, uh, in a thumbnail sketch, what we've done is we've reviewed the special events policy. And essentially what we're asking for is to be able to, um, get reimbursement for charges associated with events. Um, and so currently, we do not do that, um, and there is, there are some significant costs associated with it. Um, so just, I'm gonna run down through the policy to kind of highlight where we've made changes and what they are. Um, and then just maybe share a few details on, you know, the permits that we've received year over year for the past couple of years, um, as well as a few examples, um, so you can kind of get a sense of, you know, what that that might look like for different events. Um, so just starting with the policy, um, we added special event to the purpose. Um, and I can get into more detail here, but I'm just gonna kind of roll through, assuming you've read it. Um, we added special event public, um, safety staff under definitions, um, as well as the application process and the public safety service assessment. Um, in addition to that, we added a sentence or two, um, to the exceptions. Um, and really, you know, th- those events are things that, you know, are reoccurring annually. Um, and what we've run into year over year are there are some events that are reoccurring, but we still need an application on file so that we can kind of see the details of that event if there are things that have changed. But we wouldn't ask that those would come to council, the exception would be that they would just be approved administratively, um, and then the other pieces would apply. Um, and then under process, we would be, um, looking for an application fee associated with these events, because it does take staff time to review the applications and kind of get them rolling, um, and take a look at what their needs are. Um, in addition to that, um, we would also be proposing, um, to amend the policy so that, um, position, that's position specific rather than name specific. Um, and then moving on down the line to the real sort of, you know, part of the topic, which is the reimbursement piece. Um, we've, we've got it outlined here, um, it kind of shares what the rationale is for some of the reimbursements, um, and the cost calculations, and essentially what it is, is, you know, charging for what it costs to run the events. Um, there is a slight modification to the draft that you have in your packet that if we did bring this back to you in final form, um, I did notice that we have a little bit of cleanup to do around, um, the, um, payment provisions, just wanting to be consistent, our intention with the payment provisions is to provide, um, the entity with a, um, bill following the event, so talk to them about what the event would require, and then really give them the true cost once the event has been completed. Um, and so those are the things that are in the policy, we can get into specific detail. Um, but then the other thing that I do want to share is just a sense of, you know, how many events are we doing, you know, year over year, and so in fiscal year twenty-four, we did twenty-four events, in fiscal twenty-three, we did twenty events. Um, and twenty-five, so far, there's been about thirty events. Seven of those are associated with maintenance items, so they're not really events per se, so we're kind of really, you know, in a, in alignment, um, in terms of the number of events that we do year over year. Um, the two examples that I pulled together, um, are two instances that we received recently as we've been reviewing this policy. Um, there are a couple of, um, permits that are, are headed your way that, that may be impacted, or you may decide what to do next with, but just in terms of, um, these couple of events, um, one is Corporate Cup. So we did end up actually working with them to get reimbursement for the, um, services rendered. Um, and so that's a, a larger event, so that one, um, ended up just based on our, um, asset management software, we were able to track costs of about ten thousand dollars, um, for that one event. A smaller event that we were looking at for the school, um, was the Lantern Parade. And so we worked with them to look at the route, to kind of establish, you know, what we could do. Initially, we had approved, um, their permit for sidewalks only. You know, but they really were wanting to do a parade, and so we worked through and worked up an estimate, um, for what it would, would cost to do that parade at night after hours. Um, you know, on, on a dark evening, worked out a route, and we determined that it would cost about twenty-three hundred dollars, and that particular instance, they did not end up doing the parade as they had proposed, they ended up actually doing it here at the high school. Um, and that event is pretty special, if you get kiddos in school, I mean, it's pretty, pretty neat, those lanterns, um. But it is something that, you know, while the event's really neat, there is costs associated with the event, and so really, the, the, the policy, uh, issue here is, you know, um, how we want to take on these events, you know, like how we want to capture the costs associated with them, um, if, you know, they should be absorbed by the city, or if we should be charging entities for the services rendered. Um, and so if you have specific questions about events, um, any of the folks here can answer them, but with that, I'll kind of open it up to discussion um, and questions.
Anybody want to start? Looking over at you specifically, Adrian, because you're so hard to see.
I know, I, so, I just, as I'm, I'm just gonna think out loud for a second, because that's how I process, so I just want to make sure we think through this in terms of like balancing economic development, ensuring that, you know, we bring in these events, like I'm working, um, you know, with a lot of our downtown partners to bring in events. Um, you know, during my, uh, report, I'll be talking about, you know, the Muddy Onion, we have Mud Fest. You know, we had Winter Fest, we didn't use the, the, well, Mud Fest. Um, Muddy Onion will use the road, I think you're, they're using School Street. But I just want to think through the balance of, you know, one of our economic goals is to bring in more events and ensure that we, you know, fill in our downtown businesses or restaurants, like we want people to come out here, we we want our downtown to thrive, and I think one of, one of many strategies, right, it's a complex puzzle, is that we have events, we have these parades, we make our town just really exciting to live in, and, um, you know, I just, I don't, I, I think it's gonna have to strike a balance of like, how much do we charge them? Is, like, what is the line of a deterrent that they don't do the event because it costs too much money? And so I think the Lantern Parade is interesting, like, that's a lot of money for the elementary school, so that was clearly a deterrent. And so I think we would have to do, I don't know, I, I'm a data person, right, so thinking about just collecting some more information in terms of what is that baseline fee structure to still collect revenue, because it is our services that we are providing? And what is that threshold for these, you know, mostly nonprofits, schools, um, you know, that they're willing to pay to support their event and to support our city while still bringing in, um, revenue to our city? I think it's kind of be, it's gonna be an art and a little bit of a science, and we might not get it right the first time. And so I think for ourselves to come up with a figure based on some research, and then be open to continuously evaluating that process to see if it's working, if it's not working, and then be open to readjusting those fees if all of a sudden, we have no events in our town because our fees are too high, like, that's what I would want to avoid. Not saying that would happen, but I just want to make sure we're thinking through it very strategically.
I can weigh in here, I mean, that is, that is the policy right there, that is the policy question, because we are incurring these costs. And, you know, it wasn't that long ago, we were sitting in here sweating bullets over police overtime and DPW overtime and fire overtime. And so is it smart a move for us to incur our costs to have seven police officers on a Saturday at intersections blocking a road, or to do investigations and responding to calls? Um, because when we're being, telling the chief, you gotta cut back, or we've gotta cut back on overtime. Uh, so I, I think that, and I'm not saying, I, I, we all agree, the events are part of what makes the population great, but they come at a cost, and if the public is going to support those costs, so our taxpayers on our budget, then I think we need to be clear about that, and I think we need to be clear that those are not, um, necessarily fundamental operational costs of these departments, you know, maybe put a line in our budget that says this is special events money, and we're willing to pay this much, and then when we're weighing the budget and we say, okay, we've got forty or fifty thousand dollars in here for special events, and we're trying to cut to a certain lines, it's still worth that much money in there. Because it's in there now, it's in there intrinsically buried in these lines. And it's, it's in addition to the actual dollar cost, it's also finding the people, so we're already short-staffed in some of our departments, we call people out to serve these events, and then we need them to cover a shift the next night, and like, I just worked all day Saturday at this parade. Uh, and I, I'm, again, I am all, I, the events are what makes us, don't get me wrong, I'm not in the events, it's just, this is, this is one of those policy decisions that is your, in your, you gotta tell us how, how, you know, do we want to get revenue for it or not, and where are we, but, um, at the end of the day, we're gonna be looking at Kelly and Chief and everybody else, saying, how come the keepers back? And, uh,
Yeah, Jim, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to follow up on that, it's, it, this isn't, uh, like, a financial gain for us, this is literally just covering our costs, and each time I've been in the budget hearings with you folks for the last two years, I've heard, you know, like, we need to cut this overtime, oh. I would love to, I, I want to hold these events, I've been holding these events for my entire career, but when I'm trying to balance, how do I pay for it? And I've already cut my staff by a third of my coverage to save money, and now I'm prioritizing a special event that I'm mandating is coverage, but I'm gonna run a shift with one person less. Just doesn't sit that well with me if I can't recoup the costs and then staff my shifts appropriately. And keep in mind, we have fourteen staff members, if I need a full road closure from Ellen Street to the State House, it's about nine officers, that's the majority of my department, and then I have to, I'm still covering twenty-four seven, so you know, this isn't just about the money, you know, if I had more officers, that, you know, then it maybe it's more about the money, but there's a lot more to this than just, you know, like, we want, we, yes, we want to have these events, but we also need to cover these costs, and we also have to think about the wear and tear on the staff.
Jim.
Um, I think you hit on an excellent word there called balance, and at the risk of throwing out another committee, um, we could have a subcommittee of three people and, um, who look at individual events, because if it's only twenty-four, okay, you get handed an event, you get told what the costs are, you get told, I mean, some events make people money. And I would have no problem with charging them, you know, to say, hey, you're doing this to make money, what you're costing us money. Other events are like, like for the school, I mean, they don't have the money to do this, so the count, the, the committee could look at each individual one and make recommendations to the rest of the council. Well, here's what we think about this one, they're not gonna do it if we charge them this. Do we think it's something that people in the city would like? But on the other hand, if something's making somebody a lot of money, I don't have a problem with saying, hey, why aren't we getting a share? Because I think the concerns are, and I never thought of this when I was on the council, but Bill's right, I mean, we're always talking about cutting and costs and everything, and, um, yet, sometimes when we don't do things, we're driving up the cost for everybody, and not everybody goes to these events, so we're spending their money when it doesn't do anything for them, so I would think that, you know, case by case, I almost think is really the only fair way to do this, I know it's time-consuming. I would volunteer to be on that committee, because I think it's important enough to keep this going, but also, with, you know, like I say, not everybody cares about a lantern event. And if they're paying for it, they might say, gee, I want my money done in another way, or why don't you do this, that's something I would like, so I think it could be a case-by-case review. I don't know how it's gonna, either way, if you don't do it by case-by-case, you're either gonna have to figure out some sliding scale, or you're gonna have to just say, we're gonna have to charge everybody or nobody. And then we're right back where we are now. And I appreciate the work that you're doing on this, that you want to do on this, putting these costs together, because I think that's important to us, and that's my solution, but maybe nobody wants to do that solution, so I'm willing to hear other solutions.
Well, the, just to answer that question, the, the proposal does include uh, a provision that someone who, uh, that the city council has the authority to waive payment, uh, upon request, so, something like that, yeah, but, but there'd be coming to the whole city council, and who knows how often that would happen, um, but, you know, we're, we're all responsible for the budget and what happens.
Kind of dig, go through the process a little bit, so I, I think this might be helpful for you. The, the permits come to our attention at the Police Department right now, because of some shortages at City Hall, so we compile those, and what we can do for council is pretty simple. Every two weeks at our Public Safety Team meeting, we review those, we make an assessment of need, and we also do what we think they need for safety, DPW, fire, police, we can assess the costs, and can present that to you at the time that we have these applications, and then ultimately, you can decide, and we're doing most of that work in advance anyway, so it's not that big of a deal, um. It's just, we're, we're trying to find the, the safest way to hold as many events as cost-effectively as possible, so we didn't say no to the Lantern Parade, we, we said, use the sidewalks and we can help you at the intersections with the staff that we have on duty. They asked for an alternative for that. They processed through that, they were going to pay, then they changed at the last minute to go to the school, it had nothing to do with the fee structure, they were ready to pay for that, um, because they thought it was important enough for them to be in the streets. Being in the streets with a bunch of little kids late at night during rush hour, if it doesn't give you guys a heart attack, it gives me a heart attack, so, uh, I'm going to put extra people, tho- those kids are the most important resource we have in our community, and if we're not protecting them, then what good are we as a police department, so there is a good number of police officers there, plus my shift, and gonna make sure that they were safe. Uh, so that's what I haven't, I, I know you had a question, so I kind of wonder.
Oh, yeah, I, I just, I was gonna call attention to the fact that this has a waiver, um, provision in it, which I think, um, I, I, I think the way this is written now accomplishes the, the goal of trying to recoup reasonable costs and, um, make exceptions for when we want to make exceptions. Um, I think, Chief, I heard you suggesting that every event permit or every event would come to this, could come to the city council, and we could decide on each one of them. And, um, I would rather not do that, actually, I would rather just hear about the, the people who want waivers of the fees.
You already do.
We do now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, yeah.
So, we can change that if you'd like.
Yeah. Well, that's true, we do see them all on the agenda, don't we, yeah. Um, but, but I think what you were describing was a more in-depth conversation about looking at each one and evaluating, do we really want to charge them or not charge them? And I, I don't want us to do a process like that.
Just collecting some more information in terms of what is that baseline fee structure? To still collect revenue because it is our services that we are providing. And what is that threshold for these, you know, mostly nonprofits, schools? You know, that they're willing to pay to support their event and to support our city while still bringing in revenue to our city. I think it's kind of be, it's going to be an art and a little bit of a science and we might not get it right the first time. And so I think for ourselves to come up with a figure based on some research and then be open to continuously evaluating that process to see if it's working, if it's not working, and then be open to readjusting those fees if all of a sudden we have no events in our town because our fees are too high. Like, that's what I would want to avoid. Not saying that would happen, but I just want to make sure we're thinking through it very strategically.
I can weigh in here. I mean, that is, that is the policy right there. That is the policy question because we are incurring these costs. And, you know, wasn't that long ago, we were sitting in here sweating bullets over police overtime and DPW overtime and fire overtime. And so is it smart a move for us to incur our costs to have seven police officers on a Saturday at intersections blocking a road or to do investigations and responding to calls? Um, because when we're being, telling the chief, you got to cut back or we've got to cut back on overtime. Uh, so I, I think that, and I'm not saying, I, I, we all agree, the events are part of what makes Montpelier great, but they come at a cost. And if the public is going to support those costs or our taxpayers on our budget, then I think we need to be clear about that. And I think we need to be clear that those are not necessarily fundamental operational costs of these departments. You know, maybe put a line in our budget that says this is special events money and we're willing to pay this much. And then when we're weighing the budget and we say, okay, we've got forty or fifty thousand dollars in here for special events and we're trying to cut to a certain lines, it's still worth that this money in there. Because it's in there now. It's in there intrinsically buried in these lines. And it's, it's in addition to the actual dollar cost, it's also finding the people. So we're already short staffed in some of our departments. We call people out to serve these events and then we need them to cover a shift the next night. And like, I just worked all day Saturday at this parade. Uh, and I, I'm again, I am all, I, the events are what makes us. Don't get me wrong. I'm not in the events. It's just, this is, this is one of those policy decisions that is your, in your, you've got to tell us how, how, you know, do we want to get revenue for it or not? And where are we? But, um, at the end of the day, we're going to be looking at Kelly and Chief and everybody else saying, how can we keep this back? And, uh,
Yeah, but
Jim, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to follow up on that. It's, this isn't like a financial gain for us. This is literally just covering our costs. And each time I've been in the budget hearings with you folks for the last two years, I've heard, you know, like, we need to cut this overtime. Well, I would love to, I, I want to hold these events. I've been holding these events for my entire career. But when I'm trying to balance, how do I pay for it? And I've already cut my staff by a third of my coverage to save money. And now I'm prioritizing a special event that I'm mandating is coverage, but I'm going to run a shift with one person less. Just doesn't sit that well with me if I can't recoup the costs and then staff my shifts appropriately. And keep in mind, we have fourteen staff members. If I need a full road closure from Ellen Street to the State House, it's about nine officers. That's the majority of my department. And then I have to, I'm still covering twenty-four seven. So, you know, this isn't just about the money. You know, if I had more officers that, you know, then it maybe it's more about the money, but there's a lot more to this than just, you know, like, we want, we, yes, we want to have these events, but we also need to cover these costs. And we also have to think about the wear and tear on the staff.
Jim.
Um, I think you hit on an excellent word there called balance. And at the risk of throwing out another committee, um, we could have a subcommittee of three people. And, um, who look at individual events, because if it's only twenty-four, okay, you get handed an event, you get told what the costs are, you get told, I mean, some events make people money. And I would have no problem with charging them, you know, to say, hey, you're doing this to make money, what you're costing us money. Other events are like, like for the school, I mean, they don't have the money to do this. So the count, the, the committee could look at each individual one and make recommendations to the rest of the council. Well, here's what we think about this one. They're not going to do it if we charge them this. Do we think it's something that people in the city would like? But on the other hand, if something's making somebody a lot of money, I don't have a problem with saying, hey, why aren't we getting a share? Because I think the concerns are, and I never thought of this when I was on the council, but Bill's right. I mean, we're always talking about cutting and costs and everything. And, um, yet sometimes when we don't do things, we're driving up the cost for everybody and not everybody goes to these events. So we're spending their money when it doesn't do anything for them. So I would think that, you know, case by case, I almost think is really the only fair way to do this. I know it's time consuming. I would volunteer to be on that committee. Because I think it's important enough to keep this going, but also, we, you know, like I say, not everybody cares about a lantern event. And if they're paying for it, they might say, gee, I want my money done in another way, or why don't you do this? That's something I would like. So I think it could be a case by case review. I don't know how it's gonna, either way, if you don't do it by case by case, you're either going to have to figure out some sliding scale or you're going to have to just say, we're going to have to charge everybody or nobody. And then we're right back where we are now. And I appreciate the work that you're doing on this, that you want to do on this, putting these costs together, because I think that's important to us. And that's my solution, but maybe nobody wants to do that solution. So I'm willing to hear other solutions.
Well, just to answer that question, the, the proposal does include uh, a provision that someone who, uh, that the city council has the authority to waive payment upon request. So something like that, yeah. But, but there'd be coming to the whole city council and who knows how often that would happen. Um, but, you know, we're, we're all responsible for the budget and what happens.
Kind of go through the process a little bit. So I, I think this might be helpful for you. The, the permits come to our attention at the police department right now because of some shortages at city hall. So we compile those. And what we can do for council is pretty simple. Every two weeks at our public safety team meeting, we review those, we make an assessment of need. And we also do what we think they need for safety, DPW, fire, police. We can assess the costs and can present that to you at the time that we have these applications. And then ultimately you can decide, and we're doing most of that work in advance anyway. So it's not that big of a deal. Um, it's just, we're, we're trying to find the, the safest way to hold as many events as cost effectively as possible. So we didn't say no to the lantern parade. We, we said, use the sidewalks and we can help you at the intersections with the staff that we have on duty. They asked for an alternative for that. They processed through that. They were going to pay, then they changed at the last minute to go to the school. It had nothing to do with the fee structure. They were ready to pay for that. Um, because they thought it was important enough for them to be in the streets. Being in the streets with a bunch of little kids late at night during rush hour, if it doesn't give you guys a heart attack, it gives me a heart attack. So, uh, I'm going to put extra people. Those, those kids are the most important resource we have in our community. And if we're not protecting them, then what good are we as a police department? So there is a good number of police officers there, plus my shift. And going to make sure that they were safe. Uh, so that's what I haven't, I, I know you had a question, so I kind of wonder.
Oh, yeah, I, I just, I was going to call attention to the fact that this has a waiver provision in it, which I think, um, I, I, I think the way this is written now accomplishes the, the goal of trying to recoup reasonable costs and, um, make exceptions for when we want to make exceptions. Um, I think, Chief, I heard you suggesting that every event permit or every event would come to this, could come to the city council and we could decide on each one of them. And, um, I would rather not do that. Actually, I would rather just hear about the, the people who want waivers of the fees.
You already do.
We do now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, yeah.
See, we can change that if you'd like.
Yeah. Well, that's true. We do see them all on the agenda, don't we? Yeah. Um, but, but I think what you were describing was a more in-depth conversation about looking at each one and evaluating, do we really want to charge them or not charge them? And I, I don't want us to do a process like that.
I assume that you would admit you would just modify the form. So part of it would be this is the fee we anticipate charging for this event.
That's not a heavy lift at all. We do that every time we look at an event. Some that require little to nothing. Others, we're just helping at the crosswalk, which if we're available, we can do. Um, and there's no charge, obviously. It just, it gets into, you know, some complicated parts when we have to set up like the vehicle barriers and things like that. If we, we have equipment and we don't use it and something bad happens, you look at New Orleans, they're getting sued, right? So I know that we have this equipment. I know that we have a finance, like a, a real responsibility then to use it. Um, and then I, we also have to, you know, have a charge for some of that equipment because it doesn't have an endless lifespan, right? Uh, so how are, you know, we got a couple hundred thousand dollars in grants to buy that stuff? That money might not ever be there again. So how do we replace that and schedule it? Do we have the people that actually use it pay for it? Do we budget for it? Um, you know, two hundred thousand dollars in the capital plan paves a lot of stuff, right? Instead of having road barriers. So just trying to find creative ways to cover the cost of things that we as a capital city need. Um, and just we're, you've asked us to think outside the box. We're thinking as, we're, we're thinking hard, so.
And even small things, you know, we've had, I mean, it sounds silly, but we lose a lot of traffic cones, right? People put them out and they don't come back and, you know, we have to replace them. And so do you know, do we?
And they're not cheap.
Yeah. Do we put a little deposit on them? And, you know, you, we gave you twenty, we get twenty back. Here's your deposit back. You know, I mean, we're, it's right? It's, it's, you don't think of those things, but it happens. And whether it's the event organizers or somebody else that grabbed them, you know, you don't know, but they don't usually all make it back. Ben.
Um, yeah, I just think, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this. And, um, you know, I would just say, like, I feel like events are so important to this city. And, and truthfully, I think we have a special responsibility, I think, as you've already acknowledged, as like a capital city. So like host events, particularly when I'm thinking of like things in the state house lawn, or like when we have these large protests, that that's part of who the identity of this city is. I really do appreciate the idea of like, you know, asking people who have the means to pay to be able to do it. Um, but you know, I think about an event like the lantern parade or like all species days. I don't know what their budget is for that, but you know, those are the events that are actually like important to the identity of this community. And so it's a long way of saying like, I think if we were to put in a policy that said, oh, everybody, we're going to charge everybody, but then everyone's going to come to us and we have the ability to waive that fee. My fear would be that we would waive half the fees and then be kind of back in the same, I think we should just be honest with ourselves that if we really care about events. Uh, and we want people that don't have the means to pay for a fee, that we should budget for it. Because it's just, it's part of what this city is. And, um, so I'm all for asking, you know, putting in a fee structure to ask people who can afford to pay to pay. But, um, you know, I think there are consequences too, to just saying, oh, we're going to waive it on this one. We're going to waive it on this one. We need to be real about, if we're going to do this, we should pay for it.
So where are we with this? Right now, are, are you asking the council to adopt this policy now? Um, it kind of feels like we might want to have more of a public, uh, hearing, just, uh, to bring people out because but what do, what do other people think?
If I might, um, so you know, one of the, one of the things that we were looking for, um, from tonight's discussion was to determine whether or not you would like to consider this draft policy. So we can, you know, clean it up, bring it back to you in final form. This will require some ordinance changes. And so the next steps would be the first and second hearing um, of those changes, um, to the, the parade sections specifically. So you know, um, we could do a couple of different things. I mean, we could, you know, clean this up a little bit, bring it back and do the first hearing of the ordinance. So you could contemplate and decide at that point. Um, or, you know, if, if you didn't want to do this policy, that's also part of the reason why we brought it is because we want to make sure that if we're going to spend the time and the revisions for the ordinances, that it's something that you would like to do. Um, and so it's really, you know, what you want, uh, from us. I mean, we did, it is an interesting policy question. And so we did want to bring it forward because, you know, we are experiencing, you know, volume and events. Um, and it is kind of a one of the things that, you know, we and or we may consider putting in a budget line, you know, it's so just determining how you would like us to, um, work with events going forward.
So, Adrian.
I recall that we wrung our hands about, um, the sale, the one percent sales tax, thinking, you know, that the business community would be up in arms. And in fact, they were okay with the one percent. They were unhappy with the process. So I say more process to, to get some public input and uh, you know, really vet this with, get, get people's opinion and see how people feel about it. It may be that it's not, not a big, big problem. Um, I have a feeling that um, we, we may not find out until we actually change the policy and, and, you know, it starts to happen. But I, I would vote for more, more process. So I guess that means uh, your, your most recent suggestion is a uh, draft and a hearing on the final version and then and then decide.
Adrian.
Yeah, it's kind of exactly what I was thinking too. Like, I would like to get some input from Montpelier Alive. And maybe talk to our customers that have had events and just, you know, do a little bit more due diligence, talk to the customers, get their kind of, you know, as I said, what is like their breaking point, um, just for research and then look at other cities that are similar size to us and find out what their process is. Maybe do a little bit of best practice research. Um, is it in a budget line in their city budget? You know, what are their fee structures? What are their policies look like? I would like to learn a little bit more about what other cities like us do. And also talk to our customers just to ensure that we're hearing their voice and they're a part of this process. And just to inform our decisions.
Talking about like other capitals, because really no other city is like us in the fact that we're the capital like Ben says.
Kelly.
Just a point of clarity. Um, so we initially did have Montpelier Live to look at the policy as we were starting to draft it. However, um, certainly we can have them take a look at it again. And we could also, when you say customers, do you mean like the business community? Or do you mean like the event folks? Or do you, so I just want to make sure we're casting a wide enough net, uh, for feedback. And then we certainly can bring back, um, you know, some of the, um, details on what other, you know, options are out there.
I was thinking customers, like we know who has events in our city. So you have a record of that.
Yep.
So I'm just thinking in my head in terms of like, you know, um, you know, benchmarking some of this data is, you know, best practice could be just do a short survey, like what would, you know, you had an event in the past. Um, you know, you can ask them, you know, I don't know how the survey would be off the top of my head, but something like, you know, what, what would you, what could you pay? Is it, are you a for-profit? Are you nonprofit? Are you a school? Right? Start like segmenting that audience and collecting the data. So if it's a school and they, you know, their ability to pay, you know, a hundred bucks, like that starts enabling us to create like a matrix of a fee schedule that would allow people to pay within their structure. So I'm thinking schools, nonprofit, for-profit, you know, um, you know, a state agency like the governor's cup. I think it's through the Department of of health.
Yeah, I mean, my, it's, I think, the governor's office, but we can, we can certainly, we, um, do have some metrics already just based on sort of the applications that we have. And we could definitely do a sample set, um, of them.
Yeah, I'm not thinking like a huge exhaustive like thesis in college. I'm just a little bit of data to inform our decision.
More back for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, and we can start to talk about this more, but the, the vast majority of our events really don't have that many for-profit events per se. I mean, if they are, they're, they're usually more contained. I mean, we used to have a big one on my industry, but we don't anymore. I think you're thinking about from when you, when you were on. Um, they, they're usually either raising money for something or it's just a fun thing. They want to have a day. Um, you know, some, you know, even the Do Good Fest at, you know, National Life is, is a very expensive event for them. But it's all to raise money for good causes. And, um, so, you know, we would just be adding what, it's actually a big cost for us. It's, it's a lot of coverage for that event. But it, so it would be, you know, again, it's a policy. So that would be two or three or five thousand dollars. It doesn't get raised to whatever the, the cause is. And I think when, so, you know, I, I think it's good to ask people, but I could also picture people saying, well, that's just going to come out of the money that's going to muscular dystrophy or the money that's going to, you know, whatever. Um, because you know, we, we've got volunteers doing sign up and all this. So I think, you know, it, but at some point we say, you know, it's also coming from the taxpayers to do this. And we don't, we're running out of money. So I, I, you know, I don't know the answer. I wish I had the answer. I think it's, we don't have a lot of events where somebody's doing this and also making a profit that's requiring nothing. And, and those people actually are the ones that don't usually complain about paying. They feel like, you know, it's a cost to doing business.
So I just want to, um, echo everybody was saying about the, uh, public input. So it will be great. Um, um, like to see the results of, you already mentioned to us what you are planning, Kelly. And I was thinking if in the end we go out and decide to have a kind of a budget, um, line for this, how about you work with the grant committee, right? We have a grant committee. Would it be helpful? Just like visit their, I don't know, meetings and maybe they can apply for something, but as far as I know, they need city support or city's name, right? To apply for the um, grants, or if you want to bring some kind of, um, budget line to support this kind of events.
Are you suggesting, um, just for clarification, like at some sort of, you know, pass through? So like, if there were a, a grant that might be available for an entity to do an event for, you know, a specific thing, that's what you would be thinking?
Yeah, yeah, I think similar because we are talking about public input. Uh, you said you already talked about pillar alive, right? How about going to grant committee meeting and talk and explain these things to them? I don't, Adrian, I think it's you serve on that committee. I don't know what you think. It just came to my mind like it, it might hap, not happen now, but I think it is good to start the conversation with them because people on that committee, they are already experienced, right? Finding, uh, finding funding. This is a great, yeah, for different things.
I mean, I think the grant committee, we'd have the, you know, I'm, the first thing that comes to my mind is like economic development funds. Right? So thinking about economic development, community funds. What grants are out there? I feel like the grant world is like blowing up right now because there's just not any money in the world. And so, you know, I can work with the grant committee to do initial research to just kind of scan the environment to see what is even available that would you know, fund fund the city to support, you know, these events that I don't know what the answer is, but I can do some research.
Well, I don't hear anyone saying this is a big mistake to go down this road. I think I think people are generally thinking this in the, on the right track, Ben.
Yeah, it's, um, I, I would just like to, maybe it's already in here and I missed it, but like, uh, when, when you come back, I would just love to know how much it costs a year to cover these events. And, you know, in that way, I think if we do think about a budget line item, right? Then that's just one more piece of information that we can use to think about the fee structure. Um, so.
I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. This was never brought forward in my day on the council. And budgets are getting tighter. And yes, everything's for a good cause, but you know, nothing's free. Somebody has to pay for it. Nothing is free. And if it's a good cause and so, but I'm going to speak for my age. When you get to my age, you don't go to a lot of events anymore. It's a hassle to deal with the traffic to get there. It's a hassle to stand around when you don't have a chair because maybe you've got health problems or something. There's a lot of people that don't take part in these events who are ending up paying for them, who we're talking about, gee, they're getting squeezed like your neighbor Ben. You know, does he go to these events? Well, if he doesn't, he's paying for them. And so I just want us to remember, nothing's free. Somebody pays for it. And we, you know, we want to, I'd like to hear public opinion on this and because it is costing us and we're always looking for ways to cut because everybody's always screaming at us way back in my time too. When I was on the council, the budget is always a big deal in this town. And I don't think that's ever going to change.
I think you've got your direction. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, Chief. All right. Next up, item fourteen, state ethics law. All right.
Better, I think, for folks. That's okay. We're just going to cruise on through this. Um, so essentially, uh, what we, you know, want and need to do is just kind of bring to you, um, the sort of resulting impact of Act one seventy-one, um, the Ethics Commission and Municipal Ethics. And so um, really what this boils down to is, um, requesting something from you, which is to consider an ordinance for compliance, but then also to have you take the training. Um, and so I'm just going to kind of go through things pretty quickly because it's, it's pretty, um, self-explanatory in terms of, you know, what, uh, is in, uh, this code of ethics. Um, this, um, code does, you know, supersede what we did have in place. We have posted it. We've, you know, sort of done the checklist um, in terms of, you know, what, um, needs to be in place, you know, to, to follow this guidance. Um, and so, you know, we, we've done just that. Um, but really the key objective is to ensure transparency, accountability, integrity and local government operations. Um, so just moving on down the line here, um, this is just gets into some of the definitions, just, you know, who really, um, does this apply to? Um, and so municipal officer, so includes bodies like this one. Um, it also includes, you know, our, our city staff, our leadership. Um, and so these, um, are the core provisions. Um, and so, you know, these are things that you've seen before. These, um, are consistent with what our, you know, prior policy, um, did have in place. And so I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm just going to kind of click through um, each of these slides. Um, but, you know, they include things like no personal or financial gain or limitations on gifts or unauthorized commitments, that sort of thing. Um, and so then just getting into sort of the, the role of the Ethics Commission in all of this, um, you know, is really to provide guidance and training. You know, we actually have reached out to the Ethics Commission already, you know, on a few things that we've, you know, wondered about, um, and got some really good feedback, um, from them. Um, just to make sure that, you know, things are above board. So we have, um, definitely, uh, utilized the commission. Um, and so this is a list of action items. And so just to kind of, you know, cruise through this, um, we needed to appoint an ethics liaison. We did this on the twenty-second of January. Um, so that's already been done. Um, so it's the city manager or designee at this point, you know, we could change that, but just so you're aware, we've done that. We needed to post the code on the website. We've done that. Um, the training, uh, requirement, the city staff has completed this training requirement. I hope that you all will complete the training requirement.
I have completed it.
Jack's completed the training requirement. Um, and then if you can just send me sort of your, uh, completion of that, then I can keep track of it. Um, because there is a requirement to, you know, do it within a hundred and twenty days. Um, of this sort of January effective date, and then every three years thereafter. Um, and so we are keeping a record per the guidance that's in this, um, act. Um, and so then just getting into the, uh, model ordinance, um, which you do have in your packet. Um, if, uh, this seems reasonable, we'll bring it forward for, um, public hearings, much, much like the, the last topic. We wanted to kind of gauge, um, where you were, if you wanted to see changes or not. Um, this is pretty standard. Uh, this is the model VLCT policy. So it's been vetted. Uh, this is the model VLCT policy, so it's been vetted from and through them, um, for, uh, compliance specifically, but the purpose is to provide a procedure for investigation and enforcement and the like, um, and also identifies, you know, how complaints will be handled. Um, and then, you know, as I mentioned, the next step would be really advancing this, uh, particular ordinance as you have in your packet onto the next, uh, item, which would be for the first public hearing to adopt. Um, and so that's kind of a speedy way of cruising through this. Um, but if you have specific questions, I'm happy to take them. Um, the ordinance is in your packet, uh, in draft form. It's pretty standard, um, straight ahead, but again, if you've got anything for me, please let me know.
I can tell you, I, I did, did the training Sunday morning. It was on video. It takes about forty-five minutes. It's very straightforward. And then there's, uh, there's a little quiz at the end. And you click through and then you get, they email you your certificate.
That was my question. It's what does this take to get the training? Okay.
And, and this is, you know, I think the reason we're, we're doing this is it is new this year. It was new law from the legislature last year. You know, we've always had, since ninety-nine, we've had our own ethics policy, but now, uh, and we were, we were initially gonna do it in January and then said, let's just wait until March when we have a new council and there are people that will be taking it. So that's why but you do need to do the training as we all do.
Do you know just, uh, the legislature passed this in Act one seventy-one, but do they hold themselves to the same standard of training?
Not sure they do. And, um, you know, there, there was a, it was a kind of interesting thing about their, in, in their imposition on municipal procedures versus their own. But there, there is a process in state for, place for state employees. Though it is clear that the State Ethics Commission does deal with those complaints. So it was meant to do that, but, uh, yeah, there was, you know, I, I, I could go into all of that, but I, I do think there's now municipal representation on the Ethics Commission, which there was not. So, you know, I mean, certainly being ethical and following the rules is important. So, uh, their wisdom, they decided to do it.
It's really that state. I am talking to, I don't know what, what can I do more. So there are both for municipal ethics training, then there's a state ethics training. So there must be one for them too. Which is
legislators.
I think they actually do have training. They, you know, I, I've been in the building the last couple of years when they've had to break to go, go to these sessions. So I don't know exactly what they are, but, but I think they do have something they have to go through. So, yeah, and I've been in touch with the, uh, with the State Ethics, uh, Commission and with the City Quirk because according to the way it's defined, all the members of the Board of Abatement and Board of Civil Authority are also subject to this, including to the training, uh, requirement. So we're gonna try to set, set up a training when we do, uh, when you have an upcoming, uh, Board of Abatement meeting, which is gonna be soonish. And
About to send them another link to the online.
Oh, okay. Well, either way, yeah. Yeah, we can tell anyone who doesn't want to, uh, sit in a room with the, with your other JPs, do this, but, uh, but I was just thinking that if we get people coming into a room to do ear abatements, they're kind of a captive audience. Yep. All right. Ready to move along? All right.
Like to raise an issue you may not be aware of, but relates to this. This ethics, this new ethics framework, I believe would supersede any existing policy. I have filed, uh, some months ago, a complaint with the city or with the police chief, asking for a referral for two of his officers, the deputy chief and Officer Matthews, to be referred to the Vermont Public Safety Council, Criminal Justice Council, uh, for lying on sworn statements. And I got a response back from the chief that, oh, our policy says that those have to be filed within ninety days or they don't get it, which to me is absolutely absurd. And I think we, at a future meeting, need to have a discussion about police oversight and accountability. But the idea that you could sweep something under the rug because ninety days had passed when it's as serious as an officer lying on sworn statements to get filed with the judge, uh, is absurd. And where that policy came from, or had the council had even had awareness of that policy, it's, uh, is of interest. But I'm asking, does this ethics policy, you've done the training, uh, that, that will supersede and, uh, debunk the nonsense that I was responded to with?
What I would say is that the law requires that any municipality, uh, can adopt its own policy, which can be no uh, less protective than the state policy.
No less protective.
We, we can't have a watered down set of policies that, uh, don't, don't meet
Okay, and this will, this will work retroactively as well. It's not just that's going forward.
No. I don't understand that question, but
I mean, I, I consider my complaint still valid against the two opposite lying officers. And it, it kind of went into limbo when the chief said, oh, ninety days lapsed, so I don't have to refer this to the Criminal Justice Council.
Well, without knowing anything about what happened, what I would say is that if the legislature adopted a law that was effective on January first, two thousand twenty-five, it does not apply to conduct that occurred before that. That's, that's my opinion without, uh,
Yeah, that, that makes, it makes no sense because you, you you, you apparently no one on this council is aware that that policy existed, that we don't, uh, accept complaints after ninety days. You know? Where, where did that, where did that policy come from?
This doesn't have any to do with state.
Yeah, we should, we can move on.
So you're gonna sweep it under the rug?
No, I'm gonna move on to the, to our next agenda item.
Well, will you commit to taking this up again?
No.
You farce.
All right, um, the last scheduled item we have is briefing on union negotiations and contracts and, uh, I assume we're gonna go executive session for that. So, um, why don't we go through the other items and then go into executive session.
I have a comment on the, that key topic before you go into the session. Are you gonna jump to other? On the contracts, I don't believe Steve would agree with, the experience, the team that has been working up with Frazier. I don't believe, I think we need some outside expertise to negotiate these contracts. This, this embedded inflation of our costs has got to stop. And the current staff, as well-meaning as they might be with Frazier recusing himself,
I'm gonna
is not up to the task of negotiating these contracts. And you need to consider having some expertise.
You're out of order at this point. The time will come when the, when the, uh, contracts come before the council for, uh, for action. And any comments that members of the public want to make about the contracts can be heard at that time. Now, it's straight, I, I think that I sent something out to the, uh, to respond to something in the council earlier today that said, we can take this up, you know, other business.
This is about the retreat dates.
Was that?
Get that on my list.
Okay. So why don't we move to, to that, to other business and retreat dates? Oh, oh, yes. It was about the, uh, timing of, uh, of council meetings. So we can talk about that right now. We've been told that the schools need, need us to be out of this room and out of the building by ten o'clock. We're doing pretty well tonight. We're not gonna have a problem getting out of the building tonight, but a lot of nights we are. So, uh, one idea I thought was we could maybe start at six o'clock. I think that's, I think that's not gonna work for all the members of the council, so we can't do that. We can try to discipline ourselves to make the meetings run shorter. As I said, uh, to people, no cushions on chairs. If you wanna get a, if you wanna have a, sit on something soft, wrap the meeting up earlier and go home and sit on something soft at home. But, uh, but we might find that we just, this room isn't gonna work. The high school isn't gonna work for us because it's reliably, we can count on going longer than ten o'clock a lot of times. Um, so we could do, um, senior center instead. Any other? Any other thoughts, uh, Ben?
I just, just two. One, uh, I, I find with meetings, uh, and agenda items, if you put, I don't know if you've tried this before, or, but like putting time limits or timeframes, at least to help us gauge how we're doing. And then, you know, at the risk of being pedantic, I'm thinking of Mark Twain. If I'd had more time, I would have written you a shorter letter. Right? I think there's something to be said for knowing that we are gonna turn into pumpkins at ten o'clock. And, you know, for three and a half hours is a lot of time, you know, and I think we should try to be disciplined.
There was a time years ago where the council not only had estimated times, but they actually had start times behind, be, next to each item. And then, you know, people would show up thinking it was gonna be at seven thirty and they'd wait until nine thirty. Or they'd show up thinking it was gonna be at eight and they realized, oh, we got to it early. But, but I, I do think it's worth, worth a shot, uh, Helen.
So, uh, maybe we can just put that note when we announce the meeting and everybody, I mean, talking, I'm talking about the public. They will know that we have to leave this room at ten and they will be more flexible. Then we say, okay, thank you for your input, but we need to move the second item. And sometimes we just say, oh, let's put this two items for next agenda. Like something like that. I think it will work. And if it is really, really, if we need to meet at six and if we know this like really, uh, beforehand, now I'm happy to, um, arrange my schedule. Um, but let's keep it at six thirty and let the public that we need to leave this room at ten. And we have the three and a half hour, you know, to, to finish our meeting.
I'm gonna bring some history on this. Let's, this was always talked about and it never works that way. You don't know how many people are gonna come in. You really can't say that, well, I'm sorry, we're into the line. Those six of you have been in line waiting here all night. We just can't have you speak because that's the way it is. It just doesn't work. It never worked. I mean, Bill, I'm sure can back me up on this. We talked about that. We used to have meetings. Sometimes it went to one thirty-two in the morning. And, uh, we just had to tough it out. Basically, that's kind of what you sign up for. And I don't like moving things to, because then you're always moving something to other meetings. It's delaying those things for whoever wants to come. They're sitting there and they go, gee, I came down for this and now you're telling me you're moving it and I sat here all night. It's not fair to the public. It, I mean, if it's not something you can do on your time, then maybe you're not in the right position.
Well, the issue is the room, not the people here willing to do it. I think the issue is we
Well, let's get another room.
Right. That's the question.
But that's, but to really say, let's try to limit it to certain times, all the agenda items, it just never works that way. You're going to run into issues. Saw it all my twelve years. We always were trying to cut down the time and it was hard.
I would just say, I think we should move our location. I don't think it's fair to the school staff custodian to just sit here and wait for us till ten. I mean, they said ten, but what if our meeting goes to ten thirty-one? It's not fair for the school district staff to wait for us. So I would propose another location. I'm in the senior center. We've met and it's fine. Not great, but it works.
Um, I, 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 I'm in favor of all of the above. So maybe we move to the senior center, but we also really think about how we can try to be done at a reasonable time. And, um, Adrian had a suggestion, I think at one point to kind of collectively look at the agenda after general businesses and appearances and and decide about how much time we want to spend on each item. I think that's something we could try. I think there's a lot of different things that we could try. Um, I, I, I don't believe anybody gets good work done after four, five, six hours of a meeting. I just, that's not a responsible way to, to run a city. So, um, and, you know, I recognize sometimes things just go late and we have no control over it. But I, so I think we can do both. I think there are things we can do to try to pick up our, our meetings, but we should also move to the senior center.
So you don't have
And we're on twenty-nine minutes and counting.
All right. Great. We are over to the senior center.
We are always flexible, so we always adjust our, um, time if we need to start early, late. So there was no issue before. I think it's more about the usage of this place. That's the thing. Yeah. Everybody's ready to be flexible.
I like this room in, in certain configurations, but, but yeah.
And, and it's, and we have twenty-nine minutes left.
Yep.
All right. So we've decided to move to the senior center.
Yes.
I agree. It's not, this room is much better, but.
All right, um, city council reports. Doyle.
I just wanna thank the Planning Commission for their work on the, uh, city plan. I, I know some of us went to the meeting and, um, they just worked really hard on it. It was really exciting to hear the enthusiasm for housing in this town and, uh, hope we can work with them to make that happen.
Counselor Cole.
Uh, pass. Thank you.
Counselor Sheridan.
Uh, I'm just gonna echo about the, the city plan work and that the Housing Committee, um, did a lot of work on creating their own recommendations and their own input and submitted that to the, um, to the Planning Commission. I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's a way to pub, see the, the comments or if, you know, that's publicly available, but there was a ton of work done in there.
I'll be very fast. So I just want everyone to mark their calendars for April twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh. As I mentioned earlier, economic development in our city, we're trying to create more events, um, and with partnership with Montpelier Alive, um, and, uh, Onion River Outdoors, they will have their muddy onion gravel grinder um, on Saturday and there'll be a gear makers festival and a nature walk to bring folks into town. And then Sunday, this is really fun for folks that like to run in the mud. There'll be a mucker mud run that is being hosted by the Green Mountain Community um, fitness and it'll be through Hubbard Park. So we're working with, um, Alec and his crew to make sure that it is safe to run through the park. There'll be a five K. There'll be stuff for kids, um, really trying to bring folks into town. So, um, mark your calendars and show up for that weekend.
All right, Mayor's report. I don't have very much. I will say that, uh, we are achieved a communication, uh, couple of weeks ago from, uh, from the aide to the mayor of a city in, uh, Quebec saying that they resent the, uh, what the president has been saying about Canada becoming a fifty-first state and requesting my support in, uh, issuing a statement that says that he doesn't speak for us here in Montpelier. And, and I will, I will, I responded affirmatively right away and I will be doing something about that. I also was interviewed, uh, beginning of last week, I think, for a Canadian show called, uh, This Hour Has Twenty-Two Minutes. And again, it was a lot talking about, uh, the relationship between, uh, the United States and Vermont in particular and, and Canada. And again, we have very positive relations with, uh, with Canada. Um, many people and again, we have very positive relations with, with Canada, many people here in Vermont have, have family up in Canada, and as I say, that guy doesn't speak for me, and I don't think he speaks for most of, most of the city. And I think that's it for me. City clerks report?
Just really fast, in case anyone is curious about the, the presidential order that was passed regarding, that included non-citizen voting, stopping non-citizen voting, I'm losing my vocabulary, it's so late here. We're, I'm aware of it, looking into it with the other towns that do non-citizen voting, I'll keep everybody up to date. Early glance is that it shouldn't be a problem for us, but I don't want to say anything definitively yet, but it is on my radar.
Great, city manager?
Okay, I got a few things from general business that I'll just put in the weekly memo in the interest of time. Couple, one thing I did want to say, last year, in the congressional direct, congressionally directed spending, we were awarded $2.5 million for waterline improvement, and $1.5 million to upgrade, to elevate the Elm Street housing and District Heat in the budget, federal budget act, that all went away, so that, but we will be resubmitting those, we've been asked by our delegation to ask for those, and we're gonna ask for the same things again, but that was particularly with the water lines, that was a big disappointment. Very minor detail, just a protocol thing from now on, is anything that you would normally include me on, on email, please also include Kelly, so it's part of our transition thing. We talked earlier about this, the Country Club Road meeting date, so at our next meeting, we will be talking about a process for looking at phasing, and I think we'll probably be suggesting that we hold a special workshop meeting with the, with the VHB person to work that through, to come up with a plan that the council can approve for grant applications in moving forward, it is not necessarily the final plan, but that, rather than try to do it in one of these meetings. So that's, that, that is coming, and then lastly, you did want to have a retreat, I've emailed you, the facilitator is ready, willing, and able, she just did one with our staff last week, and just looking at Wednesdays on your norm, norm night, she has April 16, April 30, and May 7 available, so I'm just throwing that.
They all work for me.
So we can just start moving on the things we want to do, but yeah, I'm okay with everything.
I would also do, rather do it sooner than later, yeah, the 16th would work for me.
Yeah.
Whatever that Wednesday.
Yep, 16th. Sally, you checking your calendar right now?
It's fine.
Great, and maybe one of the others could be the Country Club Road.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, now we need to go into executive session, what do you think, move to conference room over there so that we started? So, yeah, so we're out of this room, so it can be cleaned up? All right, let's do that. We, we do need that, yes. I think this is a two-motion one, so the chair would entertain a motion that the council find that premature disclosure of the content of the meeting would put the city at a decided disadvantage in contract negotiations. Someone needs to say so moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? All right, now the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I won't be going to executive session.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
And you just want to make clear you will not be taking action when you come out, because probably all of us will be shut down.
Correct, yes, and, and the motion includes the city manager and assistant city manager would, would be joining us soon?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.